Good afternoon, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The study session for Newport Beach City Council, April 9th, 2019. Madam Clerk, please call the roll call.
Record will reflect, all council members are present.
All right, first item, do we have any clarification of items on the consent calendar from the dais? Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Duffield? Mr. Muldoon? Ms. Brenner? Mr. Herdman? Mayor Potem? All right, let's move right into a few proclamations today. This is Community College Awareness Month, and we have Ms. Letitia Clark. Is she here? From the District, he's District Director, Public Affairs and Government Relations from the Community College District? Okay, maybe she'll be a few minutes late, and we'll come back to her. All right, I think we have the next one. Mr. Paul Watkins, who is here for, to help us recognize National Library Proclamation. We, National Library Week proclamation that I will be reading. So if you want to speak first, would you like me to read the proclamation?
Very briefly, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I'm Paul Watkins. I'm vice chair of the four library trustees, on behalf of Janet Ray, who's traveling in China, should be back next week. But we wanted to thank you for the proclamation that offered for celebration of National Library Week. And in addition to that, we're contemporaneously celebrating the 25th anniversary of the Central Library, completed in 1994. And in that regard, we have some special commemorative library cards for you that Tim's going to distribute, if that's okay for you. They're very attractive. Regrettably, there is no exoneration for overdue fines.
We will pay our fines.
That doesn't go with the commemorative library. But thank you for the proclamation, and we'll look forward to having you.
Well, and I will. Mr. Heather Inte, did you want to make any comment before I read the proclamation?
I do. The theme of the 2019 National Library Week is that a strong library equals a strong community. And I wanted to, on behalf of the board, the staff, the foundation, the friends, and Newport Mesa Pro Literacy, thank the council for keeping us strong all these years.
Thank you. Well, let me read the proclamation, and we will all be grateful for our libraries. Whereas libraries play a critical role in supporting the quality of life in Newport Beach, and whereas libraries are contemporary and dynamic places providing free access for all to resources they need to learn, work, and thrive in the 21st century, and libraries are places for opportunities, providing programs that promote literacy, cultural enrichment, and lifelong learning, and libraries bring the community a world of knowledge and entertainment, both in person and online, and libraries transform learning, inspire dreams, and make a difference in lives. And libraries and library supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. So I, therefore Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire city council hereby proclaim the week of April 7 through 13, 2019, as National Library Week at your library. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just also wanted to recognize a very hardworking library, senior library staff here that has joined us.
For recognizing the DMV Donate Life California Month? Is anyone here? I see not. Did they confirm that they were attending? All right, maybe, why don't we do this? Let's proceed to the rest of the meeting, and if they do come, we'll do it at the end of the meeting.
Are you telling me that DMV is late?
I think so. Hope they're not doing voter registration. All right, so we'll skip down to special, study session item, Junior Lifeguard Building Proposal. So we have staff? Mr. Webb?
We do. Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director, excited to bring you another discussion tonight. Today, we're going to be talking about a possible replacement for our junior lifeguard facility. And with us tonight, Peter Toshier, our Senior Civil Engineer, is going to be doing the presentation. Actually, I picked Peter because he just passed the Toastmasters Certification Academy, so I think this would be fitting that he gets to practice his new skills here. So Peter, I'm going to turn it over to you, and you.
You can make a speech.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Dixon, and members of the council. As Dave said, my name is Peter Toshier, I'm a Senior Civil Engineer with the Public Works Department. Before we get started, I'd like to thank the Newport Beach Junior Guard Foundation for being in attendance, and also representation from the lifeguards, Newport Beach Lifeguards staff is also in attendance. This is, presentation is an overview of possible alternatives for junior lifeguard building, the replacement of the building that's actually out there right now. The current facility, first of all, junior lifeguards have been in, been going on since 1986. They started out with about 60 people when they started out, and now they're up to over 3,350 people per every summer for the kids. The current facility is located on Balboa, the east side of Balboa Pier. As you can see in the pictures, it's a, it's currently a three 12 by 60 modular trailer buildings. It's square footage for the housing right now is about 2,160 square feet. In the summer, they bring two storage containers out there to store the wet equipment that they bring in from the beach. Junior lifeguards currently use the Balboa Pier and public restrooms for their, for the restroom facilities for the, for everybody, pretty much. There are no water facilities or sewer facilities currently at this facility. Initial observations for new facility, we've had several meetings with Newport Beach Lifeguard Foundation and lifeguards. This has been a successful program, positive program for the community and the kids. JGs, they run three months out of the year. They prep about a month on each side of that to get ready for the JG's season in the summer. The existing facility does not have restrooms or showers. They would like to connect and have dedicated restrooms and showers for the JGs, so they don't have to move over to the pier side bathroom, so they can keep better watch over the kids. They would also like additional admin space, working space, and storage space. Instead of bringing stuff on the beach and off the beach every summer, they would also have a dry storage inside the building. We'll be looking at, citing a new permanent facility today, and we'll be looking at planning and permitting challenges. Also, the difficulties and costs associated with the connected local, the utilities. Our initial draft, we looked at, for the past year or so, we hired a consultant to just draft some initial looks at the building. This was before the FEMA line was enacted, and the building was actually on the beach. This building would be in the same location. It's about 4,100 square feet. The total cost for this building, for construction cost, would have been $3,300,000. JG's foundation goal to construct, to, would be committed, to commit 1.25, $1,250,000 to the construction cost. The city would pay the remaining fees of $2,050,000.
Excuse me. The facility you see up there, we had an architect, Bob Coffey and Associates, did a conceptual design on a facility that would meet all the characteristics of the JG's we're looking for. So that's it, but that's not necessarily going to be the final product, that's just one that we cited, and then we're going to talk about the citing difficulties on that, so.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. We, I mean, we couldn't build it that close to the beach, or, you know, with the FEMA, and it would be difficult with coastal also. This building that we showed you just before, that had about admin office space and a first aid room, totaling about 550 square feet, a meeting room with about 1,000 square feet, kitchen aid, kitchen, kitchenette area, locker room, men's and women's locker room, there's a restroom, interior storage, exterior storage, and exterior bathrooms for the kids. When we did this building, we, the one we saw before on the previous slide, we actually made it so that the bathrooms, exterior bathrooms, when the JG's aren't in session, could be open to the public. So on the weekend, when the JG's aren't in session, they could be used for public restrooms. We have three possible locations that we looked for to move the JG facility. All of them have to be other side of the FEMA line, otherwise we'd have to put the ground floor at plus 21 feet, which isn't practical for building, you know, on the beach. So all the sites are behind this dashed FEMA line.
I'm just going to clarify that just for a second, Peter. The original building you see on the screen there is on the sand, and we don't believe we can cite it in the current spot, so the prior slide you saw showed a building trying to get on that site. But because now the new FEMA requirements, we can't build in that zone, additional requirement that Coastal Commission probably won't let us build on the sand, we're going to be looking at alternatives to the site we have now.
So I just, I guess I just wanted to follow up with Peter, your comment about, have we considered and eliminated putting it on stilts? I mean, that...
Well, the bottom floor would have to come at a, you know, plus 21 feet, and that would be, right now, the beach is, let's say, plus 14, so you'd have to walk up, you know, 15, you know, 10 feet, just to get to the bottom floor. It wouldn't, I don't know if we want to build a building that had to go up.
Would have view issues.
And then we also, we have other site restriction issues when we're working with the public out there. We're putting a building that's going to be, the bottom floor is going to be 21 feet, and the top floor maybe 35, and...
The thought briefly crossed our minds, because of those reasons, you can imagine the added costs. Also, with that structure that high up in the air, the visibility would be very visible, and we'd have more site complaints from the adjacent residences there. So I don't think that'd be a feasible option to raise it.
No, I...
And being on the sand that close, it's, be difficult to get the coastal permit on that side of the FEMA line and working on the sand there. So we just kind of pushed that out of the, as other, looking for other locations. We'll look at the sites. Site one, as you can see, is behind the FEMA line. The pros for this site, the site one, is that it's still close to the park, and it's close to a wide section of the beach, and has a good view of the workout areas. The cons for this, this site are that we'd have to consider view impacts and traffic impacts to this site. We'd probably have to add some parking, or add, you know, turnaround up there, so when people are dropping, dropping off, they could drop kids off, or drop the people off and come back out down, down the B Street. Additionally, the closest utility is in the alley there, it's about 350 feet away. Causes also problems hooking up to water and wastewater facilities. This, this location, building on the sand and putting the parking lot on the sand, may also prove unfeasible, just because we're working on the sand there, it'd be difficult to work, to get the coastal, coastal permit. Site two is in the A Street parking lot. This is more a close, or is closer to the historical location. It's also closer, close to the park and the wide beach. It's comparable views, wouldn't impact residents, because it would be in a similar location. Residents are used to having the current facility where it's on, and it's not on the sand, so we'd be back. The cons of this spot would be, we're probably going to lose 25, approximately 25 parking spaces to make the, make the cut for the new building, and also, we'd have to take off a piece, so we can keep driving, we have to build into the Peninsula Park over there. For this, we'd also have to, the closest utilities are about 200 feet away, and that's also an added cost.
Oh, I'm sorry, just as a general question, do you see any way forward that we could add, expand the existing parking lot on the west side of the parking lot to add 25 more spots?
That's a great question. That's, that'll be site three, but there are, that is, we could do that, because there's the other parking lot on the other side has an old kiosk over there that we're not using anymore. It's pay, pay as you come, using credit card, people just come in there. And there's a, there's a way that we could do that as another project, that Public Works does another project to redo that parking lot, and we could probably capture quite a few spaces over there.
That's what I was thinking.
I haven't, I haven't looked at that, I haven't determined how many spaces, but there's, you know, we could reconfigure that park and probably capture, just off the top of my head, maybe 25, 30 spaces.
And actually determine if, there's a lot of spaces that are devoted to buses?
The buses primarily park on the outside out there, before the kiosk, but we could, we could reconfigure that.
Somewhere, but anyway, I agree with, okay, there may be some other ways.
And just a thought here, I was going to point out, I think the junior guards prefer this spot probably from an access, access point. It's the whitest beach, it's closest to the beach for them to get to their traditional area. Peter, could you back up two slides? I just want to point out something in the council there. The problem with this spot that we didn't, we raised up, is you see site two there, it's right against our existing athletic field, and we put this overlay on there, the soccer and rugby field, to just show you how close that is. Now, I think it can physically fit, and we've worked with Recreation Lord Detwiler's group on this, but I would be concerned that lacrosse balls and other balls are going to be flying at that building. And we don't want to encroach on that, because that's an important field. That was one of the constraints on this site, so just want to make sure that fact was known before we look at site three.
And though, you know, like Dave said, that we did consider that, and when I was doing this presentation, setting it up, I basically just put rectangles on there to show that, you know, these are approximate sizes. They could be, we could make the building any shape that, you know, we could work with, with the recreation, or the new, you know, the foundation and the public to make the building maybe, maybe a triangular shapes, or not, you know, going on the field as much, maybe not taking as much parking.
This area could work, again, with the triangle there, we could move it across and into the other area of the park, again, different view restrictions and things like that, you'd have to cross the aisles, but just want to kind of point some of the constraints out there for you.
Yeah. Okay. Number three is, it's on the, on the west side of the pier. We looked at bringing it over here, it's behind the FEMA line. This is closer to the utilities for pros, has decent area for drop off and pick off, pickup and drop off area, and there's no, there would be little impact to the residents out there. There's a hotel, the pier, that we, we could have impact on. We would lose, coming behind the FEMA line there, probably up to 35 parking spaces. And we're further off the beach for the junior guards, and it's a much narrower beach on the, on the west side of the pier there. Like I said, there are not view concerns for residents, but there could be view concerns for the, for the local, the local inn, the local hotel right there. And we'd probably also need, probably not part of this project, but also need to consider reconfiguring the parking lot. As you can see, if we move just a bit west, there, there is that, that driveline going in where the kiosks used to be, and people used to queue up going in and out of there, and we could probably use that for parking. Site three B, I just rotated it by 90 degrees, but it has the same pros and cons. Just wanted to give a, give a look of what it could look like if we just rotated it, but it has the same, you know, utilities, and we lose about the same amount of parking spaces out there. These are some of the thoughts we had on the project, some of the costs associated with those, those, the project. The current site is about $20,000 a year for renting the modular buildings out there and the other buildings that we bring out. They last about 15 years, and right now, we're about 10 years into that cycle, so we'd need to purchase or get new ones in about five years. There's no utilities going out there except for electricity, so we don't have to worry about utility or site work out there. And the estimated maintenance cost for the past three or four years is about $10,000 a year. All three sites, one, two, and three, I have the construction cost at $3.5 million. Additional site work and utility work for site A would be about $150,000 and $300,000. $150,000 for the additional site work, because we had to rebuild that parking lot and change circulation out there, and $300,000 for hooking up to the utilities. It's pretty far to get to those utilities in the alley out there, we had to go, you know, replace the concrete street out there and all that work, but the expected life of the, of the building for all the new buildings would be about 50 years. And I estimated the, the maintenance cost out here at $25,000 a year. For that number, we, I used the, the current lifeguard building, square footage, and reduced it down to this building, and so, you know, the first 10 years, we probably wouldn't have much, but after a while, it would, the maintenance cost would increase. So I put $25,000 a year. For site two, site two, the historic site that we use, the site work would cost about $60,000 to reconfigure the parking lot out there, and the utility work would probably cost about $200,000. And for sites three A and three B, to hook up to the additional site work, I know we talked about having a different project out there, it would probably be, have to do a different project for reconfiguring the whole parking lot, but just for reconfiguring the parking lot where we're working would be about $100,000, and for hooking up to utilities would be about 100, for hooking up to utilities about $100,000, and additional site work would be about $100,000.
And just to point out, we mentioned reconfiguring the drive off, that's not in this, that's just working with the local parking lot, but that's still a good idea, that we don't use that kiosk and could pick up parking, so that'd be an added cost whichever one, if you wanted to pursue that. And you'll note the cost of utilities goes down, because utilities tend to be by the pier and on the west side, so staying close to the pier helps us on cost.
That is true, yeah. Status of the design team selection. Last year, we went through an RFP selection, and we sent out a proposal, RFP to seven design consultants. We received four proposals back. Staff reviewed and scored the proposals, two staff from Public Works and one from lifeguards. After we reviewed all the proposals and met, the recommended proposal, we selected Jeff Katz Architecture, and it was mutually selected amongst all the, all the people, lifeguards and staff. Jeff Katz has a lot of experience working in the coastal zone. He's done lifeguard facility San Diego, and he's also doing a fire station up in Hapling Bay right now. He's done fire stations in, recently finished a fire station in Garden Grove, and he's used to working in the coastal area and life safety buildings. The proposal we received from, from Jeff Katz included concept, regulatory approvals and permitting, and then development, development of the construction documents. Next step for this project will be defining the scope of the project, and then possibly refining, refining the contract with Jeff Katz to scope and cost for him, and then award the contract either in the first meeting or second meeting in May.
Let me clarify a question. Are we also tonight going to recommend the site location, or is that still work to be done to validate each one of those?
I would like to have the site location determined, it'd be good, it'd be good to have that. I mean, it'd be good for Jeff to have that.
Okay.
Yes, I clarify, our hope tonight is that you look at the various options and give us some direction, maybe where you want to go. There's some parameter questions we need. We've been holding off on hiring the architect, because we really don't know what the scope is, and it does change, as you can see, with the different options. And we don't even know if you, there might be another options, these are the three that we came up with. So if you want to go to the next slide, maybe we can present the questions here.
Sure. These are some of the questions, comments. Thoughts on the overall size, including amenities? Thoughts on the project cost and matching funds? As I stated before, the JG Foundation, Newport Beach JG, Lifeguard JG Foundation would, said they could come up with $1.25 million for matching funds for construction. Any thoughts on the preferred location to develop the concept layouts, and then any other locations that we should consider?
Okay, we have several questions up here. Mayor Potem?
I have a few. The first one is, it'd be great to know what the cost of losing 25 parking spots would be, so we at least have that factored in. And then Huntington Beach has a junior guard building. What do they do with their building when it's not junior guard season?
My kids did junior guards in Huntington Beach. I don't believe they, they, I know they staff it, but they don't, they don't really use it in the off season. We worked with Recreation, Laura and her team, we met with them and the junior guards, and we believe that this, this junior lifeguard building could be used in the off season for, for events, or could be used for other things that Recreation could, you know, possibly use for out there.
Yeah, I mean, so for example, I mean, it, this, the building would never pay itself back, and I don't think we'd ever expect that, but one of the ways that we offset Marina Park maintenance is through rentals, and so I'm kind of curious if, when we're putting the design through, whether off-season rentals would be a consideration in terms of how we, how we design some of the space?
Oh, definitely, definitely. I mean, we, like I said, we met with Recreation, I think we could use this as a, would like...
Maybe Laura Detwiler could come up, and she has some thoughts on how they might program the building, but I think to your point, there is a big auditorium room in the building, and maybe that could be small group rentals, weddings, something of that.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of city council. I'm Laura Detwiler, your Recreation and Senior Services Director, and we have spent a lot of time thinking about how we might utilize this facility off-season, and similar to that of Marina Park, it gets a lot of use for not only city business meetings, but also rentals. We think this might be a really nice venue for small wedding gatherings as well, but we also think we might be able to run some recreational classes too, so. Marina Park, if you've tried to get some meeting space over there as of late, it's heavily utilized, so we're always looking for spaces on that side of town, and we think that we'd be able to maximize this when the JG program wasn't going on, so we, we would look forward to having this facility come online.
Awesome.
Very good.
And then two others. One, the first one is, we didn't discuss coastal, or timeline, or things like that, so I'm assuming all of this would need to go through coastal. Assume for a moment that we reached, we approved it, and then we approved the construction, after the construction, it'd go through coastal. So what, realistically, what would a timeline look like on this project?
We would probably go through the concept phase, which probably takes, probably six months to go through that, to work with the Junior Guard Foundation, lifeguards, and maybe someone to do some, some public meetings, and then bring it back to you. After that, we could probably bring it to coastal with probably 50% plans, and, you know, and bring it to them, and then their permitting would probably take anywhere from, best case, six months to a year, to get back to work on some of the restrictions, on what they, what they, what they would or would not accept, or what the, they may want, if we're taking away parking, they may say that we are parking neutral, which would mean we would have to do that, we could elect to do the other side, or look for parking elsewhere, where, you know, on Main Street, and the rest of somewhere else in the city where we could equalize the parking out there.
I think if I, Mayor Potem, it would be 18 to 24 months to go from approval of tonight to concept to, enough design to go to coastal and get through that process. That can be six to 12 months, to a point where we could actually award a project, it would be 18 or 24 months.
Seems to me that we probably should be looking at parking neutral, parking neutral option as well, so we should, we should probably dual-track that and try to find a recovery of 25 parking spots, or 35, depending on the direction. I, I'll just say real quick, I think, I think I like, I like map two, or item number two, and then that's it for me.
Hi, Ms. Brenner?
I have a question for Erin. I should have asked you this earlier, but I have three junior guards. Do I need to recuse myself on this issue?
Well, do you pay, do you pay the fees for them?
No, that's the one thing I don't pay for them.
I think you're fine.
Okay. Is that your only question? Okay, Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. Could staff, could you put up location, site two slide? There we go. That FEMA line, that's the dashed lighter red line.
That is correct.
Does that take into consideration the use for the ground floor, meaning if the ground floor were to be basic cinder blocks and simply storage space, does that affect the use? Or the allowance of, of it to be the base of the structure?
If we're behind the FEMA line, we don't have to be at plus, if I'm understanding your question, we don't have to be at the plus way. If we're behind there, we can just follow the normal, our construction code, you know, state, the state code.
So we're permitted to be beyond that line, as long as we hit a certain height?
If you're on the ocean side of that line, I believe, the height, the floor height has to be 21, I think it is.
Yeah, bottom, bottom floors, okay.
Bottom floor. And it's a one-story building, so there's, there wasn't a two-story proposed. If you're behind it, I think we go to our normal zoning, which would, I don't know what the elevation would be in that location, but roughly grade.
All right. Try to follow me if you can for a second. Does it matter what's on the first floor if that height limit's met?
I, I don't know particularly, I know just from the discussions with CDD that when they're doing buildings, they have to be flood proof. I guess you could have a place, and again, I'd have to maybe turn to Simone, if you have any information on what we might be able to build, if we could even build a first floor there?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Potem. Simone George, you're Community Development Director. So with the structure, I'm sorry, Councilmember Muldoon, are you talking about the, the lifeguard structure to be in the FEMA zone or outside the FEMA zone?
So if it's outside the FEMA zone, and by the way, I can't talk insurance, so please don't, if you can avoid that topic, because of conflicts. Is that the only requirement related to insurance, or are there other requirements? Is it purely an insurance question?
No, it's not a purely insurance question.
Okay, okay, thank you. So my, I'll just tell you what my thought is. My thought is that that first floor can be essentially used for some sort of storage, and the second floor that's flush with the pier, if that could be the activities floor, similar to the concept we had for the design of the pier with the restaurant on the, on the edge of it. The space roughly in this, that this blue box takes up would fit in between the pier and space 801. And the height would be the only issue, if that bottom floor could be used for something. And the second floor could be the same height as the pier, is my thought.
So if, if you're outside the flood zone, you're, the whole structure's going to be on grade, right? And so you can do anything you want, if you want to put a storage, or you want to put activity center, or... If you want to put a storage or you want to put activity center or any type of other use, you can. Since you're outside the flood zone, your, your development standards are normal. If you're within the flood zone, then that's when you have to raise the entire structure up, up to 21 feet. And that underneath that structure has to be open and free and clear so you can have the waves go through the pylons to the other side. You can't have any obstructions. So if you want to put storage there, sure you can, but you can't build anything permanent underneath it if you're inside that FEMA flood zone.
That's exactly what I was looking for, thank you. So that space, if it were to be there for the sake of a buffer, has to be totally empty. It could just basically be stilts of sorts. How high is it from the ground floor roughly to the pier, to be flush with the pier?
About fourteen, the beach is about 14 feet, so it would be.
Over 14, yeah, so seven feet at least, maybe, maybe eight.
About level, about the same.
Of empty space underneath the building is what I'm envisioning you're seeing.
Yes, yeah. I was just, just offering, if there was something that was an offshoot of the pier, similar to how actually the lifeguard headquarters works, not quite totally analogous, there's enough space for that same blue square foot you'll see off to the right to fit between the pier and the 801, which is a public restroom, correct? Which would then be closer to the utilities as well and would take away from no parking spots. But I'm not an architect engineer. I'm not really excited about any of these plans. And I, just because I, I'm worried about losing car spots, so that would be my number one concern, I think. If there's a way we could figure out to not lose car spots, I think it'd be easier. And that was just thoughts I wanted to share about that possible location. Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I have the same comment as Councilmember Muldoon in terms of we just, I think a goal should be to get this where we're, you know, neutral on car sites at the end of it. And the only real question I have is just, obviously, you've sat down with the junior lifeguard group. They have an opinion about the best site?
Maybe they want to speak to that. I, I think that we should, they'd prefer to be on the sand. They like their current spot. I just don't know if it's buildable and feasible, but that's our concern. The height restriction, we'd have to have the building up, we'd have neighbor views. I don't know if coastal would even permit it because they don't like us building on the sand. But I think they could speak to that if you grant, if you want to truly give your opinion on that.
Whoopsie. Hi, Mayor, city council members, city staff members and guests. I'm Graham Harvey. I'm chairman of the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Foundation. This is really great progress, so well done to the city staff for putting this together today. I have a couple items I am going to speak to site two in a moment, but I do want to just speak about some of the dollars and cents of this for a moment because the $1,250,000 commitment is, is a fact. We are committed to doing that. I did provide you with a current funding report, so you all should have that in front of you. But just for the record, to date, we have secured $870,000 in cash and pledges to get to our goal. That leaves us a remaining $380,000 to go. So we're about 70% of the way there as far as our funding is concerned. That is our minimum commitment. So if we can raise more money, we will. We also have, while we're talking construction, we do have possible ways to offset some of the construction costs with in-kind donations of building materials and construction services. So Public Works has given us a little bit of guidance on that. We did have a, for instance, we had a parent approach us that wanted to donate the concrete for this project. And we weren't there yet, but we asked them, what would it take in order to do that? And they gave us some good guidance on what the city would accept as far as in-kind donations. So I just wanted to give you sort of the financial fundraising update on that. Regarding what you guys are discussing here, Mr. Muldoon, I do agree on the FEMA. I think if we can get past that FEMA line, even if it's a very mundane utilitarian style, you know, portion of the building, that would be great. Or maybe even the deck protruding. We are a proponent of keeping the location at site two, only because it's been there since 1984. It's had tremendous success and we want to keep that success going. So we, we know that's a proven winner and I think that you guys are right on target focusing on that.
Can I just ask a question, Graham? So if it went over on the other side of the pier, you're saying that that would lose some, 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 something?
As a, as an ex-lifeguard and junior lifeguard myself, they, they actually have to cone off the pier all the way to Coronado because of the crowds during the summer. So it's, I mean, it's simply not feasible to be on that side of the pier. B Street would probably be the second best spot after A Street and that has its own challenges clearly. So I think you guys are, this is great. You're right on, as far as the crowd control, the drop off for the parents, this is, this is a good location. But we do agree with looking at utilitarian options to make it basic or go past the FEMA line. I mean, there's clearly buildings right now past the FEMA line. I know it might be different from new construction, but maybe there's an insurance issue. It's uninsurable past the FEMA line and that's something, if it's a basic building, the, the city's willing to take the risk. I mean, maybe it's even under the deductible for flood anyways. I don't know, the replacement cost of the building. So those are some, some points on that, so.
Well, let me just comment and congratulations on significant progress to date. And I'm just very pleased to see that. I mean, that is fabulous and that certainly sends a strong message that the lifeguard, junior lifeguard community is willing to back this and work with the city in a public-private way. And that's really just commendable and very grateful to all your families who, all across the city, who have stepped up or will be stepping up. So that, that's a good sign. Any other comments up here?
Could I ask?
Sure, please.
I would just like to hear a little more about the, apparently the connectivity of the building to the sand. At least some portion of it is important, correct?
Correct, yes.
Could you just talk about that for a second?
Sure, so, you know, as an ex-junior lifeguard instructor and junior lifeguard in the eighties myself, that is where the children congregated every morning to kind of start with their morning announcements and start the day. It's a, it's been a very workable spot. So I think that's something that we need to keep regardless of how we're going to structure this. The contact to the sand is very important. And it kind of provides a little buffer too, bringing it off the park. So the public can kind of do its thing and the junior guard, you know, I mean, there's 1,400 kids a day going down there now. They need their own space and yes, having the connection to the sand is vital, really, so.
So, so your perfect world, if you took proposed building in blue here and just brought it out, just if you could, would just pass the FEMA line a little bit? Or brought the beach to it?
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea to, to keep working on bringing, you know, inching the building as far past the FEMA line as you can and maybe even storage or just the deck or what have you, but something protruding onto the sand would be, I think, a benefit.
And I think there's a solution there. Could you go back to the concept here? Go back to the concept of the Bob Coffee concept? If you look at, if you look at this concept here, and I was just asking about, they have a deck, they use a large deck where the, the kids are going, keep going back. Sorry for. But you, you notice the deck there, that's probably 20, 25 feet wide. So to Councilmembers Muldoons and Avys thought, maybe we hit the building just behind the line, but the deck pushes towards the sand in that parking area and we might be able to squeeze it in that way. Again, I stress the building, I was talking to Simone about not going into the FEMA area because if we have to go up to 21 feet, there's some other problems. We get into construction costs about 500,000 to put on piles. And Simone reminded me, we need an elevator because it's high ADA, that's another 250. But if we can go back to the site two there, if you take that picture and you turn it 90 degrees and we stick the deck in the parking, or maybe we can minimize the parking area and, and work around that. You see, we might just rotate that 90 degrees and use that area where the FEMA line towards the sand is as our deck. There might be a solution there if this is your preferred area.
Mr. O'Neil, Mayor Potem.
Speaking of fundraising, so one of the things that we've talked about in concept is using one of the exterior walls as a, almost like a donor wall, similar to what we've got over at Central Library where we show folks who have donated a certain amount each year. Kind of curious, have you explored that too much with, within the JG community? Do you think that's something that you'd be able to, you know, push through? And then I gotta say, the more I've been thinking about naming of buildings, I, it's hard to, it's, it's become such a controversial issue all around the country on, for a variety of reasons. I'm trying to figure out my thought process on that one, but a donor wall seems to be pretty benign. So I'm kind of curious, have you, have you explored that and what are your thoughts on that one?
Have, we, we actually are in process of doing that right now. We're selling spaces on whatever, we, we're predicting we're going to have a section to do that. So we are selling spaces for a minimum of a thousand dollar donation. We do have a handful of donations that are interested in that. So we do have a list. I think there's like nine people on the list or on our list. So we're kind of one step ahead respectfully. But yeah, so that's, that's going to be a, I think, an important part once this is approved and people know it's, you know, it's a real thing that's going to happen. We think that part would be loaded probably, probably be very popular.
So I know we've got, so we've got Central Park, or the Central Library. We've got the Ben Carlson statue that had names on the base. What's the, this is maybe a question for Erin. What's the process for determining, you know, when folks are going out and raising money to be put on the side of a, of a public? Yeah, we have, we do have a policy, but I'm kind of curious what the, what the process is for, for doing that.
So it's primarily a council policy and we could basically set up whatever you want and you just waive whatever provisions if there's a conflict. So if that's something you'd like to see, maybe the council could take action to, to basically exempt us from that policy.
I can't remember what the policy says. Do you recall?
I think, if I remember correctly, it basically says, you know, we're not going to name things after, after people in general.
Oh, I guess I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I mean, that's something, that's something to be discussed. But I'm, I'm suggesting more along the lines of a, of a wall where, I mean, so let's, you go on the other side of the library. The other side of the library has plaques. The plaques have names of people who have donated to the, to the foundation. So I'm kind of curious, what, what's the process we would put in place for the ability for the JGs to go out and raise money to put names of people on the side of a building for a donor wall?
So if you give me a few minutes, I'll look up the policy and I'll be able to answer your question more specifically.
I guess, I agree where we can waive a policy. I guess my question is more, from a legal standpoint, is there any issue with moving forward on creating some kind of donor wall that?
I think the only issue there would be, would be if you open it up and then anyone who donates that amount can have their name on it.
Sure.
So that's the only real legal issue. You couldn't exclude someone or be, you know, more prominent. But if you set forth what the rules are as far as getting space, then, then it should be fine. And the only things I'm aware of are the council policies. I just don't know what the specifics of the policies say about it.
All right. I think that should be at least considered when we're moving through the concept phase.
Mr. Avery, do you want to have another question?
Yeah, only that I think a donor wall, when we're doing these public-private and we're asking the public to, to give and we've got these foundations going out, just like they've done with the library, such a great job. I think it's, it's entirely appropriate to, you know, have that sort of recognition. Obviously, it does help and everywhere we go, we see that, it's common, so I think it's, I support.
And the Arts Commission is actually looking at a donor wall out here at some point, so.
Yeah, I think it's good, thank you.
But as a concept. Any other questions of Graham or anything? No, okay, well, thank you, Graham. We'll move out to the, did you want to say one more thing?
No, just thank you very much for the effort and putting this on the agenda today. This is fantastic progress. And we do have someone from one of our major donors that would like to speak today. So while we're on the fundraising topic, I think it's appropriate to have Bob May come up and say a few words.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cool. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, staff. Appreciate all the hard work and advance it's way more than I even knew was happening. I'm here today representing David Pyle, resident Newport Beach, longtime lover of water. All four sons, one, or two sons and two daughters went through the junior lifeguard program. And I help him with his personal philanthropy and that's why I'm here today. I just want to share a few things if it's okay. And I'm going to put my glasses on to do it. Since 1992, I've been a fundraiser, so I have that perspective, at Cal State Fullerton, Mission Hospital Foundation and American Crete College Educational Foundation, a high school equivalency program. And then since 2015, I've added to that supporting David Pyle and his family in their personal philanthropy and some business philanthropy. I'm just sharing that as an expert background and I would offer up, if I could help any way with donor walls and thoughts behind that or policies, I would volunteer my time to work with anybody that it could help. Been doing it for a long time, I can tell you a lot of pitfalls. Don't ever do the bricks on the ground if you can help it. I'm going to share a few thoughts on the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Foundation and supporting the program. So as I mentioned, all four of David's kids and a lot of his friends, all their friends, went through the junior lifeguard program. David brings it up a lot. He reaffirms often during meetings and events the critical importance of the programs, the training for water safety, swimming, emergency care and the like, for all those served, saving lives long-term, generationally speaking, he would say. We also agree with the city and a lot of families we've spoken to and the Newport Beach Junior Guard Foundation that after 35 years approximately, the temporary facility, maybe it's time for a functional space, sanitary facilities, running water, aesthetic presence, it's kind of up to Newport Beach standards probably overdue. When approached by Graham and some other fellows from the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Foundation about the public-private partnership between the foundation, David and us, we just kind of jumped right in. We're all for it, 100%. I would urge the mayor and the council and the staff and everybody to think of this more than a public-private partnership because there's no private here. It's really public, public, public. The public here with the city funds, public charity volunteer and fundraising effort by the foundation and the public donations by community members who are being served or find the program important, all coming together. So I think that's a little different than some standard public-private partnerships where businesses and taxation comes into it. I mentioned the jumped all in as I shared and I meant that David, hearing about the goal of raising the 1.25 million and being swayed and persuaded but knowing it's a good idea, instantly pledged $625,000 in matching support for the program. So half of the 1.2 million dollar raise. The goal of that, trying to urge people into action. So if you give a dollar, it's going to be worth two, that kind of thing, to help get it up to that 1.25 million dollars. In addition to that, we were watching, because we were hearing, and this is going back, maybe it's last fall, when you guys were in your budget process, there was potential to allocate some money in the budget for continued design work and stuff. I think you're talking about today, I think there was a $70,000 line item. And we were kind of watching the meeting, watching the minutes to see when that happened. And the, as soon as we saw that $70,000 going into the budget for 2019, in your budget, we made our first $70,000 donation to the foundation. So the first 70,000 has already been transferred over. The rest is being held on the side and it's there. If it needed to be there tomorrow, it'd be there tomorrow. The philanthropic community is also hearing about David and the Pyle family being involved. And at some meetings I go to with some peer groups, there's a few philanthropists who've actually come up and said, hey, there's people talking about this and this is something we've been approached on and would like to consider supporting it, but do you know what's happening? Because you're kind of most close to what's going on. I let them know, I was coming here, he's going to learn more about it and really impressed, I'll have a fantastic report. I let them know I'll report back. But they're kind of shelving the requests for right now until there's some action moving it forward so they know this is like really happening. They don't want to hand over the money and it just sits in a foundation and nothing's really going on with it, you know, where, where's it at? So exciting, the things that you're talking about. I'd share this just as it's kind of a rock and a hard place for the foundation and fundraising because they're kind of at that point where donors are saying, hey, is it happening or is it not happening? Are we going to be moving forward? We've been talking about it off and on for years and in some way I've heard about it, it's a great idea, we support it, but I'm not ready to commit the money yet. So it's kind of a fork in the road in that way. So I, I know the FEMA line I wasn't aware of. I knew I'd have to go to the Coastal Commission and we all know Coastal Commission has its own opinions and thoughts on things. So there might be other barriers or hoops to jump through and all that kind of stuff. But I would urge the mayor, council, staff to get it to that place where we can go to the Coastal Commission, hear what the feedback is. You guys are doing some fantastic things on the opportunities for the different sites. Sounds like you might be able to balance out the parking, which is always an issue. So we would urge you to do that. And I would just say, together, the public, public, public team can definitely get it done. And if there's other barriers, we'll help you overcome those along the way too. Thanks for the time.
Well, thank you. Those are wonderful comments. Appreciate your support. Now let's turn it over to public comments. Please come forward if you'd like to comment on the proposed idea, concept for the junior lifeguard building. Please come forward. No? Nope, changed your mind. Okay. All right, well, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any comments? Well, why don't we give you some direction if I hear from my colleagues? Are we comfortable with the proposed size? Okay. The, are we all leaning towards site two? As close to the sand as possible? Do I hear any disagreement about that? And the project cost? Keep trying to find ways to save, but I know you've been scrubbing those numbers. And then with the private-public support, the public-public-public support, that's going to really be a huge, huge difference for the city, I know, and for the community. And parking neutral? See if we could really scrub the parking lot. I guess I would like to say, for purposes of financial planning, of the project planning, the finances, let's not burden the lifeguard project, junior. the finances, let's not burden the lifeguard project, junior lifeguard project with redesigning the parking lot. I think the parking lot needs to be done anyway. We're always looking to maximize, optimize space for parking, and we know we need to get rid of that kiosk, and I've talked about that separately anyway. So let's strip that out of the junior lifeguard cost, because that's something I would recommend anyway, that we would be doing anyway, because we're always looking to maximize parking. Does anybody have a different thought? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's what I was referencing when I meant dual-tracking it.
Yeah, but I mean, not burden the cost of the project, and we'll do that as a parking lot improvement project.
Yeah, I was just going to clarify, so if we went on with Site 2, we wouldn't be on the other side of the pier. So we would try to make it parking neutral, I can maybe see how we can get as many spaces back as we can.
But we could get it on the other side of the pier, the parking spaces, right?
Yeah, that would, it could be the same project or it could be another project. It's going to add costs to do both sides, just so we know clear on costs. Right now, we're talking about a $3.3 million total building cost plus site costs, and we're, we don't have a handle on those yet, we'll have to see what those come out. And I didn't know if you're intending you want to expand the project to also include the west side of the pier and modifications of that parking lot.
Well, I mean, if I misspoke, let me just be clear. I'm trying to find where we can find 25 parking spaces. And if you think we could find it on the east side of the pier, great, but I do know we've been talking about removing the kiosk and finding and optimizing parking on the other side. So I guess I'm looking at it holistically from a parking, finding parking spaces. You're thinking you could find 25 spaces in that same area there?
I don't know how many we're going to lose once we talk about how to put that site in, but what we could do is have the architect do the building concepts and also give us a concept for the other side, and how we might lay that parking lot out differently, so that we can maybe.
Just that narrow A Street parking lot, you mean?
Uh, no, the, the west side of the pier where we have the throat in there.
Yeah.
Maybe we can find a way to do something there, and then we can choose whether we do it with this project or as a separate project.
All right, well, okay.
But we'll work on the parking.
All right, but I like doing it in parallel. The preferred location, I think we just decided, developed the concept layout, and so, moving forward, just so we're clear, you'll, if we all are agreeing to move to the next step, this will be in the capital improvement project list going forward for the budget?
Currently, there's $70,000 in the CIP now. What we'll end up doing is talking to the architect, as Peter mentioned, getting the scope, bringing back an item to you for approval of the whole project scope, say sometime in May.
Okay.
And it'll, it'll be more at 70,000, but you're going to add the money you need then to the budget, and we'll go ahead and go through the concept and development phase.
Okay, well, we're inching forward here. One step at a time. All right, well, that's, do we do a thumbs up?
Can I make a quick?
Oh, please, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms.
I just wanted to add that in addition, I'm also a soccer grandmother, and so if we can keep the parking spaces on that side of the pier near the soccer field, it's definitely preferable, because it's hard to find parking spaces down there on soccer Saturdays.
You are our adolescent sport subject matter expert.
That's right.
Yes, Mr. Muldoon?
Just to go back to my original idea, let's say it's not flush with the pier, but let's just say that section is moved all the way over, so that it stops roughly where the 801 property line is, although it doesn't go out as far under the sand. If you, if you pull that slide up, I'm curious, I've only counted one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine spots, if it's all the way at the end of the lot.
Correct. The only thing is, there's a circulation element that goes through there, so we might block that. We can look at that, I.
But, but that's just a bike path, right? That could, you could.
I think the cars actually circulate through there.
Oh, cars go through there?
Yeah, they, that's their outlet.
Okay.
So if we block the end of it, we lose our circulation.
You're right, okay. Just trying to say these parking spots.
Well, I think we can do it. We haven't gotten enough detail there, but I think we could angle that and take the parking and kind of do a 45 and a 45, and maybe not lose as many, and make the building a little more tucked in that corner. Let us play with that, I think we'll end up with a lot less, and then when we come back with a concept, you'll see what kind of parking impacts there are. We are going to go towards parking neutral, or we'd always love to get more parking, we'll do something on the east side, so.
Yeah. All right, any other comments? Are we all in favor of moving forward? Okay, so thank you, staff. Thank you, Peter, and thank you, Graham and Mr. May, thank you very much. Keep moving forward. Thanks a lot. All right, now I think I saw a member who, of the community, did come for a proclamation on, is this?
It's Latisha Clark.
Latisha Clark is walking to the podium. All right, well, thank you for coming, and we'd like to recognize Community College Awareness Month, and if you'd like to introduce yourself, and then I will, and say a comment or two, and then I will read the proclamation.
Wonderful. Thank you, and pardon me for my tardiness. Honorable council members, Mr. Mayor Protem and Madam Mayor, thank you for recognizing community colleges during Community College Awareness Month. As you may know, this month is recognized nationally, but our state legislature took a step further this month and deemed, deemed April California Community College Month. And so as system-wide, we have 115 colleges, one being the online college, the newest college in the system, and on behalf of the South Orange County Community College District, we serve about 60,000 students at both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, in addition to the new site in Tustin, which is the ATEP site. And we serve many students with over 400 degree and certificate offerings, but we're joined by nine community colleges countywide, and so you know Coast Community College District, the North Orange County Community College District, and Rancho Santiago Community College District. So together, we're all celebrating Community College Awareness Month throughout the county, and we appreciate the recognition.
Well, we're honored to recognize you. Let me read the proclamation. Whereas South Orange County Community College District is one of the largest community college districts in the region, serving approximately 42,000 students on three campuses, Saddleback, Irvine Valley College, and the Advanced Technology of Education Park ATEP. And I'll get this acronym, S-O-C-C-D, is a leader in higher education and enriches lives in Orange County through learning, and 300, and its 350 square mile service area serves nearly 1 million residents, and it is a community partner through the offering of classes at 130 community sites beyond the three campuses, and provides outstanding education through more than 400 degree and certificate programs that prepare students to fill local and high-skill workforce opportunities. And students added 1.3 billion to the Orange County economy in 2016-17, approximately 5% of the county's total gross national, regional product. And the community college district's impact supported 18,000, over 18,000 jobs in Orange County, meaning one out of every 124 jobs in Orange County is supported by the activities of the South Orange County Community College District. And the district is proud of the 50-plus years in Orange County and commitment from faculty and staff to students. So now therefore I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire City Council, dare hereby proclaim April, the month of April 2019, as Community College Awareness Month. So thank you very much. Let me come down and present you with the proclamation.
She's actually going to be here at 7:00 PM, if that's okay with the mayor.
Sure, okay. All right. Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward. And City Clerk, you don't need to read any announcements, so please come forward if you have any public comments to make, and state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Alexis Portillo. I live in Newport Coast and attend Newport Coast Elementary. I am working on my sixth grade passion project. For my passion project, I chose rare genetic diseases. I want to bring awareness and make a change in our community for children living with special needs. In order to bring awareness, we need to be more inclusive and make our everyday life accessible for everybody. I believe that one simple thing that we can do as a community is to make our parks have better access and make it friendly to kids with special needs. I think that one simple thing that we can add to our parks are disability swings. It is an inexpensive way to add, to make a huge difference. Another thing that we can add to our parks to be more inclusive is to provide more ramps at our beaches, not only for kids with rare diseases, but for people in wheelchairs and who want to experience the ocean. As a sister of a special needs child, I understand how important this can be, because for the past six years we have been living here, my sister has been unable to go on the park swings. I'm requesting an immediate change to this matter. There are many surrounding cities that have already made these changes. All I'm asking is for Newport Beach to step up and make a change for our inclusiveness.
Well, thank you, and I've asked Laura Detwiler, our Director of Recreation and Senior Services, to comment on your request and offer some thoughts for us to consider.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and Alexis. I had an opportunity to meet her before the meeting started, and I'm just so super impressed and certainly excited to be working with her. As you know, we love our playgrounds in Newport Beach, we have 35 of them across the city. We've been very fortunate over the years with the resources that the council has given us to keep them fresh and exciting and adding new amenities. We have included some requests in this next fiscal year as well, that will allow us to look at these types of improvements, and I think it's something that we can continue to work on over time. And I was able to do a little bit of research, and just wanted to show the council a couple of pictures of what Alexis is envisioning, and you can see, there's, there's a couple of different models, there's even more out there. You'll see the one at the top middle, too, is called a friendship chair, which means you can swing with your buddies or siblings as well. So I think there's some great opportunity there with our existing parks and some of the projects that we have on tap moving forward. And one of the things that's really exciting about our playgrounds is we often get an engaged community that helps us sit down and pick out these amenities. So it's great that Alexis has found out this process early on in her life, and I think she's going to make a great difference here in Newport Beach.
And I think she'll be your first committee member.
That'd be great.
Right? Well, thank you, Alexis. Did you have a comment, Mr. Muldoon? No? All right, Mayor Protem, did you have a comment?
Well, it's a, she's a constituent in District 7, so I just want to say thank you. We're looking forward to seeing what we do here. I actually have a quick question, is, can we use Parkinloo funds for, for something like this?
Yes.
Oh, there you go. All right, we'll find a funding source for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you, you preparing, and good luck on your project, and let us know how you do. Thank you so much. Any other comments, public comments on non-agenda items, please? Agenda and non-agenda items.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm David Grant, 2205 Cliff Drive. As you pursue this issue of the NAC, and you're probably as tired of it as I am, but it's, it remains a serious issue. As we, as you pursue an investigation into the possible corruption and inaction and direction of the Newport Aquatic Center, I'd like to make really just four comments. The first involves a member of your council, and as much as I like him, and as old a friend as he is, my suggestion is that Marshall Duffield recused himself from this issue because he was in a business related to the NAC and Bill Whitford. And I don't suggest any wrongdoing whatsoever, it's just, it seems inappropriate for. So that's a decision that you all make, or he makes. The second, I want to urge you to consider hiring a responsible, to get this thing off of dead center, consider hiring a responsible fiscal person, a forensic accountant, to examine the books for you, you can't do all these things yourselves, and to see what's right and what's wrong. The third suggestion is that, to make you aware that by what appears to be, what appears to be, that's fair, inaction by the council on this issue, it's been going on for too long, as you well know, but as the leaseholder to the property of the NAC, and all the charges that have been made against it, you appear to be culpable in all of this too, and you have a city attorney to deal with it. But that's, that's a problem, because it's on your property, and you're going to have a host, you've already had a host, you're going to have another host of angry parents if, if something doesn't finally get wrapped up here. Fourth, it's not fair to make all these criticisms if I don't provide some suggestion of a solution. And one of those suggestions might be for you to establish a board, a legal board, and you can do that, you're, you're the holder of the lease, that would, that would take over the direction of the NAC, because the governing board currently is made up of people, four people, and yes, and maybe five, who were never elected, who appointed themselves, and, and the direction of that thing should be by you all. So having said that, those four points, that's all I want to say. I wish you well. If I can help, let me know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grant. Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dixon and members of the council. My name's Bruce Ibbotson. I'm still a current NAC board member, although I was illegally removed by the remaining board members. I've also been illegally expelled from the club for being a whistleblower. I'm here, much like Dave Grant is, to help reinforce a few issues. The most important one that I see is the city maintaining a long-term liability. You own the property, and we have been providing evidence, some hard evidence over the last several years about issues, primarily it's surrounding financial violations. It's not about who likes who down there, it's financially related. We believe money is missing, and it involves kids, and it's on the city land. We ask for your help. Please don't wait four more years when the lease rolls. You have the liability now. If you need to do more forensic accounting, you can start with the Hansick Report, which we spent a lot of time and money, a lot of effort went into doing that. In fact, all of us that were on the board approved the use of a third-party forensic accountant. There's a lot of information there already. Please look at the books, look at the information. I also have a concern that, that all of you on the council are actually receiving all the information that's being provided. There's a lot of it, I know it's daunting, but we're hoping that all of you are able to see it. Another issue is, as Dave raised, perhaps an interim board. Under your ground lease, you have several options that we believe, and if there's any way to resolve using the ground lease, please do. I was on, I was a founding member on the, the board when we built it, so was Dave. I have no intent of being anywhere near operating the facility once the resolution's reached. I'm here to help solve the problem. The problems are, are pretty evident, and we're really asking for your help now, and we don't want this to, to keep smoldering and getting worse and worse. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments on agenda or non-agenda items?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. The closed session agenda says that in the next two hours, you're going to be discussing with the city attorney whether to initiate litigation about three matters, but without explaining at all what those matters are. This brings to six the number of matters that have been noticed in that way in the last two months. My concern all about, about all of these is that in a closed session, you're obviously hearing one side of an issue as to whether to initiate litigation or not, but not announcing what the subject of your discussion is going to be rather defeats the purpose of the notice, and because the people who may have a different view that they want to bring to you about why not to initiate litigation, don't really have the opportunity to know that you're talking about it or to bring their view to you. It's possible that you're getting that information in some other way, but if you are, I don't know what it is. Since I know so little about what the city attorney communicates to you or Since I know so little about what the city attorney communicates to you or how he does that, I did want to bring to your attention, unrelated to this, two important court decisions that have been released in the last two weeks that affect what the city of Newport Beach can and cannot do. As most of you know, last September, the United States Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal, a three-judge panel, decided it was unconstitutional for a city to arrest people who were sleeping on public property unless the city could offer some alternative place for them to sleep. Last Monday, April 1st, the whole Ninth Circuit, which consists of a lot of judges, decided to let that decision stand and not review that decision by a larger panel, which means that what Judge Carter has been doing in Orange County seems now to be vindicated. Second decision I wanted to let you know about, as many of you probably also know, and Councilmember Muldoon may have to close his, put his hands over his ears, the telephone companies have, for a long time, been asserting that to facilitate the deployment of cellphone equipment, a passage in the California Public Utilities Code gives them an absolute and unfettered right to do whatever they want to do in public rights of way. Well, on April 4th, the California Supreme Court unanimously affirmed and reinforced a earlier appeals court decision in California that California law does indeed give cities the right to regulate the cellphone deployments to address public and community concerns about the aesthetics, how they look. So we're not as helpless as we may have thought, and our California Supreme Court affirmed that last week. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Any other public comments on agenda or non-agenda items? Seeing none. Mr. Harp, do you want to comment on the closed session items, please?
Yes. The city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss items 4A through B, including meeting with the city manager, assistant city manager, and the human resources director, discuss labor negotiations with those unions that are listed under agenda item number 4A, and meeting with legal counsel, discuss possible initiation of litigation in regards to three matters. And just briefly, you know, in essence, what Mr. Mosher is arguing in regards to the Brown Act is that the public's interest in knowing what the city council is going to discuss is greater than the prejudice potentially caused to the city by disclosing the information. And fortunately, the legislators already decided that issue for us by building into the Brown Act, what has to be disclosed in these situations, and so I thought it'd be appropriate to address his comment.
All right. Thank you. We are recessed until 7:00 PM. Thank you. April 9, 2019, regular meeting in Newport Beach City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll call?
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. There's no closed session report this evening.
All right. We have an invocation this evening from Pastor David Mann, Calvary Chapel of Costa Mesa, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Protam O'Neill.
I'll fix that microphone. Thank you. Thank you. I love to be with you, and it's been a very long time, and thank you for having to come back. It's a privilege to be here tonight with you. Father, we just come before you in this moment, and we ask your blessing upon our city. We ask your blessing upon our water district, the police force, fire department, the lifeguard force, Lord, all the municipalities, Lord, that operate here within the city. And, Lord, we thank you for our council, our mayor, all the staff, Lord, that serve here in Newport Beach, and we ask your blessing upon them, not only in business, but in their personal lives, too. And your blessing upon all the people that reside here. Give us great wisdom tonight in the matters that are before us and also in the things of future pursuit. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your hands over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty.
Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has the discretion to extend or shorten limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones off or set them in the silent mode.
We will now have city council announcements and oral reports from city council on committee activities. Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off with an absolutely well-organized, inspiring event, and that was the Police Association Breakfast that I attended with most of my colleagues here, and those that weren't there wish they could have been there, because it's always excellent. It's just inspiring the stories of the officers that represent us all out there and go beyond the normal scope of their duties. And this was an awards breakfast to just highlight them and thank them for their service in the entire force, but particularly these individuals that, at risk to themselves and protecting us, did great things over this past year. So that was inspirational. I also went to a celebration, I was in the Sea Scouts here when I was in my early teens at the sea base on Coast Highway, and I was in a ship, instead of troops, they call them ships, and it was Ship 711, and it was run by a young guy named Mike Stewart. And this was in 1966, and he's still doing it. And so, he's been doing it for 55 years, running this ship, being basically the scout master of this troop, only taking kids out and teaching them how to sail on a big boat. And they made several, multiple trips to San Francisco, teaching these kids seamanship up and down the coast, and many trips out to the Catalina and the islands. It was really great. It was at the NAC and the community, and a lot of people flew in to recognize him. And so that was another member of our community that is just doing great, has been doing great things for over five decades. And I also went, I've been involved, along with councilmember O'Neill, we've both been involved in the Newport Harbor High School Mentor Program, and the lunch was held last week, and so we went there. It was at St. Andrews, it was absolutely packed and full of men, professional men and women who have agreed to mentor juniors in high school. And another inspiring event with mentors and mentees talking about that experience. And I'm not sure who learns more from whom, but it happens every year there at Harbor High. And I'm on the Orange County Sanitation District's Operations Committee, and it's fascinating, I'll just leave it at that. And I also attended the John Wayne Airport Town Hall with, led by the mayor and supervisor, Michelle Steele. And all I can say, really, is that there's some passionate people, and rightfully so, about the issues surrounding Orange County Airport and their plans for the future and the impacts on our community. So that was very impressive in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield. Mr. Muldoon.
I just want to add, I also attended the Police Appreciation Breakfast, which is always an honor to attend. I sat with Councilman Hurdman and Mayor Dixon and our city attorney, Aaron Harp. And I've decided that the better front man than a mayor is actually our chief, who is getting better and better at his role. And Keith Morrison was surprisingly witty and enjoyable as a speaker. And I just want to reiterate the appreciation the city of Newport Beach has for all of our men and women in uniform. Also attended the John Wayne Airport Airform, which was the exact opposite, I would say, of the Police Appreciation Breakfast. It was unorganized, somewhat chaotic, because of all this passion the residents have. But I think Mayor Dixon did an excellent job of letting the residents know that she is a supporter of their desires. Councilman Hurdman and I also sent an aviation committee, and we share the same thoughts, that we're willing to do whatever we can to stop expansion of the footprint at John Wayne Airport and to stop expansion of the flight path above our homes and the amount of trips that are allowed from commercial airlines. It's going to be an ongoing battle, but I look forward to continuing to do it for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
Yes. I met with Bill Shopoff and Corley Newman about the revised plans for Cole Center projects. I also met and toured the AVIA project, which is at the corner of Ocean Boulevard and I believe it's Carnation in Corona del Mar. It's the big wave building that is being constructed there with owners Rick and Karen Julian. I also attended the airport meeting, and I did want to say something about the airport meeting, because it was frustrating for most of us. But I think the anger and the frustration of our citizens about the airport was evident and probably justifiable. But I also want people to understand that they don't have to do anything we want them to do, and it's in our best interest to help convince them that they want to help us. So it's really, the anger is understandable and the lashing out, but the more we can help all the supervisors understand that for them to protect Newport Beach, that they also will benefit. We're the place where they bring their relatives from out of town, we're the place where they come for special occasions, for dinners. We're the playground for Orange County, and I think the more we can respectfully deal with the Board of Supervisors and get the word out to all of them, not just Michelle, but the rest of them, that we're not just asking for special treatment, we're not spoiled Newport Beach citizens, we are concerned citizens, this is our home, and even though we are angry and upset about it, we have to be, we have to be nice to these people, because they can't help us if they don't want to. So that's the only, the message that I came away with from that meeting was, we don't have any power, really, and our only power is in helping to convince them that they want to help us.
Well said.
And the only other thing I wanted to mention was that tomorrow night is the Speak Up Newport Meeting, and it's about trash. And it may not sound like it's something that we care about, but we need to all care about it, because we are going to be charged with some enhanced requirements as far as our recycling goes, and it's really important that our citizens understand what the legalities are and what we have to deal with. So please come to that Speak Up Newport meeting tomorrow evening.
Well said. Mr. Hurdman.
All right. We voted at our last meeting to restructure the aviation committee in our city, and applications are now being accepted for consideration on the new aviation committee. The process is that each of us, each of the council members up here, will have a representative from our district on the aviation committee. If you're interested in applying for, to be that representative, you'll definitely want to fill out an application online. Just go on the city website and up in the search line, type in boards, committees, commissions, application, and it'll pop right up for you. You can complete it online. And then you definitely want to make contact with each of us, too, if you're interested in filling this position. I know I certainly want to talk directly with anyone in my district who's interested in sitting on the aviation committee and have a good conversation with you. So I encourage you to apply. Second announcement, we continue to meet on a monthly basis, our monthly Tidelands Water Quality Committee meeting, and the Messaging and Strategy Airport Working Group meeting also continues to be held on pretty much a weekly basis, although this month it's been on every other week basis. Little report on Bayside Drive here. Traffic calming efforts are approaching the finishing line. I believe there are some pictures to display. Right there, this is Bayside Drive. Few facts about it. The project is on schedule, and this was accomplished despite weeks of heavy rain and an actual broken water main in the middle of construction at the top of Marine slash Jamboree. Public Works and the GMC worked diligently to complete this job on schedule and ready for the summer. And sitting in the audience over there is Mike Senna Cory, city engineer, who's provided all the supervision and oversight on this project, and I want to commend Mike for a job really well done. Some project highlights, new traffic signals at Bayside, Jamboree, and pedestrian crosswalk, new retaining wall on Bayside Drive and Jamboree, new sidewalk segment connecting Promontory Point Crosswalk to Pavilion Shopping Center that was never there before, new raised landscape medians, enhanced wider bike lanes, six-foot lanes, new striping with vibrant bike lane markings, new palm trees and medians and parkway locations. All of these are designed to slow traffic down. And speaking from one who probably drives this section of Bayside at least five or six times a day, I am definitely noticing a slowdown in the rate of vehicular traffic. So that's good. It's working. Things that are remaining to be done, traffic signal installation, decorative striping and medians, decorative striping and crosswalks at Marine Avenue-Bayside Drive intersection, and then some additional signage that Mike has promised me. For people coming down the hill, either going onto the island or making a right or a left, when I say coming down Jamboree, there's often confusion about how you get on Babo Island, or whether you should make a right, or what happens if I make a left? So Mike's going to get that straightened out for us. Okay. And I attended a really interesting meeting this week. It was called an On-Demand Micro Transit System. It's going to be implemented by the Irvine Company here in Fashion Island to get people, it's an on-demand system, kind of like an Uber system, to get people to and from businesses and surrounding areas here in Fashion Island. The reason I attended the meeting is because I've... The reason I attended the meeting is because I've been working with the Babo Island Merchants' Association to possibly implement a transit system that would bring people to the island, to the business district this summer, although this summer it's too soon for it to happen. But we were talking about this in relation to maybe expanding this program to serve Babo Island and the Corona Del Mar Business District areas as well. So an individual trolley system that I've been working on may not be necessary. I attended the Police Appreciation Breakfast the same day the Babo Island Museum and Historical Society held their annual Vietnam Veterans Recognition Day, which I attended. I also attended, I was the only council member there, not complaining, not casting any dispersion on any of my colleagues. Given recent events within the Newport Mesa Unified School District that have to do with diversity, they planned and orchestrated and put on an outstanding community workshop on diversity, and I attended it that evening. It was a very well-structured evening, designed to problem-solve about the problems of diversity within the school district. We all received a letter about Tony Yim, also Officer Tony Yim, who is dedicated solely to working with the homeless population in our city. The letter was actually written by a homeless individual commending Tony for the service, for the care, for even love that he has shown for him. And I shared that letter with our Chief of Police, and John has assured me that Tony is going to receive some commendation and recognition for his service. And I think enough's been said about the Airport Town Hall meeting I did attend. Thank you.
Mayor Protim?
Thanks. So I was able to attend the Newport Coast Elementary STEAM event, as always fantastic. I appreciate Principal McCormick inviting us. Attended a transportation conference at Chapman. I echo Councilmember Muldoon's comments about the Police Appreciation Breakfast. I also echo Councilmember Avery's comments about the Mentorship Appreciation Lunch over at Newport Harbor High School. As you were talking, it strikes me that it's probably time for us to bring in Debbie Brostek and thank her for all she does for the kids in our community. And I also toured Tustin's Temporary Homelessness Shelter that's over near the district. Quick reminder to everyone that the Homelessness Task Force applications close tomorrow. We've received a lot of them, which is fantastic, but I just, if you are interested and even on the fence, please do submit your applications by tomorrow. I attended the Anti-Defamation League Annual Dinner, and I wanted to thank Rabbi Gersh Zilbermann from Temple of Atiyah for being my guest. He has been fantastic for our community, and so I just wanted to say thank you. Then I've got a couple of pictures. One of them is, let's see which one comes up first. Ah, National Library Week, cool. So it's National Library Week. We honored the folks in our library, in our library at our study session. There are many people from our city going in and reading to children, doing storytimes. Last night was pajama time, and it was quite a bit of fun. I just want to say thank you to Daisy, who's pictured there, and then Debbie, who is...
Boy, these two are little.
Yeah.[817.19][817.19](laughter) Two of those are mine, so...
They look good.
Yeah. Represented 40% of the children at the storytime.[824.51][824.51](laughter)
Where's your pajamas?
That's what I sleep in. The Newport Beach jacket. Yeah, anyway, so you always got to be ready. So then the next one is, also attended the Special Olympics on Parade. Pictured with me in this is, and I'm going to make sure I get it right, Greg Kozlowski. Greg was, is the Orange County Special Olympian of the Year, just a truly great person. He's pictured, actually, with both his award and the putter, the Special, the Orange County Special Olympics made, had made a very special putter for him. He is a phenomenal golfer. And because of this award now, he'll be, he'll be someone who goes around to a number of events, one of them being actually May 9th hometown in Newport Beach for the Special Olympics. If you haven't signed up a team, please do. If you are interested at all, please go to the Special Olympics Southern California website. And actually, speaking of Special Olympics, we've got a slide, I think? Maybe? Different one. This is for the event at Newport Coast Community Center. All right, I'll read it. "So I invite all community members to come out and support our Special Olympic athletes on Saturday, April 20th, at the Newport Coast Community Center. The basketball tournaments opening ceremonies begin at 9:00 a.m. with a tip-off for the first round of games. And then following tournament play, the athletes and their families enjoy a barbecue lunch and awards ceremony. And volunteers are always needed for these events, so please sign up through the Special Olympics Orange County..." Ah, there you go. "So please sign up for, through the Special Olympics Orange County website to participate in creating a truly transformative experience for the athletes." If you haven't gone to this, you have to. It really is one of those phenomenal things that, it just, everyone loves this event. So again, it's Saturday, April 20th, at the Newport Coast Community Center, starting at 9:00 a.m. And if you'd like to volunteer, there is a website up right there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have a few announcements, just to sum up and set a path forward on our airport issues. I do want to comment on our Town Hall last Saturday. As many of you know, we in the city are in the business of holding public meetings, and the city of Newport Beach will hold at least 17 in the month of April. But I cannot remember, many of us have been here longer than I have, when more than 500 people showed up for a Town Hall. But that's what happened here last Saturday morning, when Supervisor Michelle Steele hosted a Town Hall on the subject of John Wayne Airport. I think every person who attended and your presence sent the message loudly and clearly that our community is deeply concerned about the county's general aviation improvement program. It's important to acknowledge that the county does run their meetings differently than we do, and many attendees were disappointed in the format and the limited opportunity for public comment, and of course, I agree. Yet as frustrating as that may have been, the sheer number of people present and the public comments that were made spoke volumes. And we were heard, our city was heard, our residents were heard, our people were heard. And we're not going to quiet our collective voice. So while it was chaotic and a cacophony of sound and many, many comments over, talking over people, the county staff, Supervisor Steele, the county staff, there was a member of the FAA staff there, they heard our community loud and clear. But now to move forward, because that's really what this is all about. We do need to keep the volume up or turn up the volume. The Board of Supervisors is scheduled to vote on the General Aviation Improvement Program Environmental Impact Report on April 23rd. And if you share the city's concerns about the proposed general aviation improvement project, I hope all of you do, we are, this is an issue that truly unites our community, truly unites us. We are all together. The council has voted unanimously to support retaining the current footprint of the general aviation FBO structures at the airport, and we are all united in that part. We are in violent agreement, I often say. So mainly, the potential for the increased general aviation jet traffic causing more noise and pollution, now is the time to act. That is the issue that's before the Board of Supervisors on April 23rd. Mr. Herdman, Councilmember Herdman is Chair of the Aviation Committee. It's getting geared up, it's been restructured, it's been repurposed, it's reorganized, and it's going to be powerful. And the next committee meeting is Monday, April 15th, I believe. So tell the county how you feel about it, these issues. So attend, a couple of meetings coming forward. The Orange County Airport Commission Meeting on April 17th at 5:00 p.m. at JWA Administrative Offices, and the address is here. I'll read it out for people who may not be watching a screen, 3160 Airway Avenue in Costa Mesa. And then, most importantly, is the Orange County Board of Supervisors Hearing on April 23rd at 9:30 a.m. at the County Hall of Administration, 333 West Santa Ana Boulevard in Santa Ana. And if you cannot attend, please do write to the Board of Supervisors. And the addresses are here on the screen, and you could find them on our city website. Councilmembers Herdman, Muldoon, and I are meeting with at least four of the five supervisors, and we'll wrap up with two next Monday. We've sent a letter stating Newport Beach's position to the full board, and we're going to send another. We are communicating with our colleagues in other cities potentially impacted by this project. I plan to attend the Board of Supervisors Meeting on April 23rd, and I will speak on behalf of the city's position to support Alternative Three, which limits further expansion of this general aviation footprint. So as I said, we are in violent agreement, your passion has been heard, it rang loud and clear. We are aligned together to advocate for our city, to protect our quality of life and our property values, not only for our city, but the economic benefit for all of Newport Beach makes to Orange County as a whole. And we will advance your interests and our collective interests before the board, and also in Washington, DC. Our Congressman Harley Ruda is, pledges to be involved, to continue to work with us. So the county, I believe, has heard us, the airport staff has heard us, and I think the Board of Supervisors will be hearing us. But just to echo what Councilmember Brenner said, they make all the decisions, you are absolutely right. So we could let our voices be heard, but it's like a little bit of sugar goes a long way, too, because they're the ones that make the final decision on our longstanding 40, or 40-year-old settlement agreement. So we want them to know how important Newport Beach is to their economic situation in Orange County. So I want to thank you Newport Beach residents for speaking your mind, asking the tough questions, and getting your point across. And history has proven that the collective voice of Newport Beach can and will make a difference. So, okay, that's it for the Town Hall. I may have some other announcements. Last week, it's so wonderful to hear stories that we're all involved with the young people of our community of all ages. And I too enjoyed participating in the Mayor's Youth Council, Newport Beach High Schools, all of them, Newport Harbor, Corona Del Mar, Sage Hill, juniors and seniors are involved in a program that the city coordinates through our Recreation and Senior Services Department, and each, and these students, about 15 of them, were generally, who applied to participate and selected, are genuinely interested in the city and city government and opportunities to get involved. So I asked them to come back after college and start participating, and run for City Council, and get involved in our commissions and our committees. And they asked amazingly intelligent questions, and they're thoughtful, and they're provocative, and they are our future leaders, and I was proud to meet with them. Also, at the other end of the age spectrum, I sat up here and spoke with fourth graders from Our Lady Queen of Angels Church there. We're doing a tour of the Civic Center, the City Hall, and they got to sit up here and pretend that they were mayor for a day, and it was really, really, really fun. And they asked me all kinds of questions about how to, I asked them, how we can make our city better, and the beach, and beach cleanup, and, no complaints, they just love our city, and it was wonderful to hear from them as well. Also, in the spirit of doing, doing good things, I was honored to attend the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for one of our residents, Matt Imers, on March 31st. It brings tears to my eyes when I do that, attend the Eagle Scout Court of Honors, because these young people have just devoted, whatever, about 16, 17, or 10 years at least of their lives to doing good things in our community, and it was just such an honor. This particular young man, Matt, is the one who conceived of the idea and worked for four years, working with the city and the county and back to the city to install the new drinking fountains that you see, and this one specifically over in East Bluff, near the Muth Center, where you could put your drink, water bottle into the water fountain. So it took him like four years, but he did it, and it was quite an accomplishment. April 9th, this Saturday, bring your children to our fifth annual Mayor's Egg Race, this Saturday, April 13th, from 10:00 a.m. until noon. Bring the kids and grandkids and join me out here on the civic lawn for some family fun. There will be egg roll races, games, crafts, bouncy houses, train rides, and an opportunity to get your picture with the Easter Bunny. So I know a few people up here will be bringing some family friends, so it will be fun. This is a free event, open to the public, it's fun, and I hope you can join. And I think that is it on my announcements. And let me just clear my desk here. All right, Madam Clerk?
Just briefly...
Oh, I have one more announcement. Thank you.[1482.03][1482.03](laughter) I'm sorry, this was, were you going to say this, Mr. City Attorney? Thank you. We have a proclamation that was left over from our study session. So Angela Betts, are you in the audience? Please come forward. This will be a proclamation recognizing the DMV Donate Life California Month. So if you'd like to tell us what this is, and I will then read the proclamation.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for being here.
Oh, scary.[1510.63][1510.63](laughter) I guess, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your support, and thank you for letting me take a minute to tell my story. My name is Angela, and I'm a donor wife. My husband Nate passed away on June 22nd, 2017, and he was just 33 years old. We were out here, living his dream. He worked for an Italian motorcycle company right in Newport, got to ride a motorcycle every day. And I know you're expecting me to say that he died in a motorcycle accident, which he did not. He crashed a lot of them, and walked away from everyone. So it was very unexpected when Nate suffered sudden death in our home one evening from undiagnosed hypertrophic cardiomyopathy. It's one of the most common causes of death in young athletes, and it often shows no signs or symptoms. So it's very surprising when the youngest and the healthiest suffer things like this. And just a few months prior, we had run the Heart Association 5K, where he paced with me for like a mile and then just annihilated me. He was, he was fast. We'd never discussed our final wishes, because due to how young we both were, how young he was, and all the accidents that he had walked away from, I had just begun to believe that my husband was invincible. And the only thing that we had ever talked about was becoming organ donors. And we had both, when we moved to California, gone to the DMV and gotten that pink dot on our license, so I knew that that was something that he had wanted. And honestly, had he not done that at the hospital that morning, I don't know that I would have said yes to them, because you're confused, and you're scared, and you think it's a dream, and he's going to get up and go home. And it wasn't until after I became an ambassador that I realized that the last thing my husband did wasn't go to bed that night. The last thing my husband did was make the attempt to save lives of total strangers. He attempted to save lives of people he was never going to know, people he would never meet. And he made me even prouder of him than I already was by having made that decision. So I guess I do this because I want everybody to just take a moment and consider being an organ donor. And then, once you've made that decision, please discuss it with your family, so that they know of your wishes, so at that time, they're not forced to make that decision in a time when they're not really thinking. And just make sure you tell your family, let everybody know. And by being a donor, you could be a hero. And I'd also like to ask everyone to join my team for the Donate Life Run Walk, because I'm going to need some new fast-paced setters. And yeah, come join. Thank you.
Well, let me, I'm going to read a proclamation now, just to honor your good work. "Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expression of compassion to those in need, and where more than 113,000 individuals nationwide and more than 21,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And on average, 20 people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, and more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California. And at any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors, and a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. And millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood. And the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition, and over 15 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored. And California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry when applying or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at California Department of Motor Vehicles. So now therefore, be it resolved that I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach... Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as DMV Donate Life California Month. So thank you, and thank you for letting us do this. Thank you. I've gotten my little badge on my license. Thank you, on behalf of all of us, for helping to make the DMV do something really good here. So thank you. Matters of which the council have, is that where I am, have asked to put, placed on a future agenda. These are not matters for discussion. This is merely to see if three council members would like to discuss the matter at a future date. Do we have three council members to bring back an item for consideration of reinstating the Public Art and Cultural Fund as proposed by Councilmember Hurdman? Okay?
With four votes, the item will move forward.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion items 1, 12, excuse me, items 1 through 12. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Okay. Council, any items to pull from the consent calendar, items 1 through 12? Mr. Avery? Mr. Duffield? Mr. Muldoon?
Is item 3 continued? Okay. I have a couple of recusals, Madam Mayor.
Pardon me? Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to recuse in item 9 due to business interest, as this could result in funds being directed towards undergrounding, and I'm employed in telecom industry. And that's it.
Okay, just one item?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Ms. Brenner.
I'd like to pull item 3.
Mr. Hurdman.
I'd like to pull items 5 and 6.
Mayor Protim.
None.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yes. Give me just one moment.
Excuse me, Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
I do have, for item number 7, an announcement to make on that one before it's voted on.
Okay, 7?
Yeah, item number 7. This is a consent calendar item that adjusts the salary schedules for all key and management employees. It is adjusted, the salary adjustment by 2% per year effective January 1, 2019, 2020, and 2021. One change to that salary schedule that's different from what city council saw on that schedule that was presented at the last meeting on March 26th is an increase in the salary schedule in the same percentage of amounts of 2% per year for those key and management employees that have contracts with the city. So that includes myself, the city manager, city attorney, city clerk, police chief, and fire chief. So those salaries are on the schedule now that you have before you, and the salary ranges are being adjusted by the 2% in line with the key and management employees. But I want to note that these employees with contracts with the city will not have an actual salary increase unless there's an amendment to the contract. So that's by separate action item there. And I'll also note that we did find a couple errors on that salary schedule. So you do have a revised salary schedule in front of you for this specific item to be approved.
Okay. And also, I wanted to clarify, I thought item number 3 was going to be postponed?
Yes, but that item's been pulled for discussion. So we'll, oh, not postponed, it was pulled for discussion.
No, but I thought it was going to be pulled. No? Or continued?
Oh, continued. We have it on tonight for...
Well, Mr. Georges is here.
We actually have a substitute ordinance. So BIA, we worked with BIA in the last eight hours, and so we've amended the ordinance, and so that copy should be in front of you for this evening. So we do have, we made changes to the ordinance.
Okay, so it's good that it's been pulled. All right. Mr. Mayor Protim.
I think I can do this. I move the balance of the consent calendar with item 3 being pulled by Councilmember Brenner, items 5 and 6 being pulled by Councilmember Hurdman, item 7 with an amended Appendix A, and a recusal noted by Councilmember Muldoon on item 9.
I second the motion.
All right, public comments.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. My name is Mike Hewitt, and I represent Newport Marina. I submitted correspondence yesterday regarding the minutes from the March 26 meeting, and I reviewed the video, and I reviewed the draft minutes, and I believe that the statement that I made in my correspondence, which is all of two sentences, is much more accurate reflection of what I said. And I'd request that you incorporate my statement into the draft minutes.
And it reflects exactly what was said when you looked at the videotape, is it?
Yes.
We had, the city clerk went back and looked at the tape and confirmed that.
Okay. We will, we'll bring it back to amend the minutes then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Susan Skinner, and I'm here to applaud the resurrection of the Election Reform Committee and also ask that Jeff Hurdman be placed on this committee.
But it's going to be polled, so you could... Four is polled? It's five and six?
Five and six. Five and six are the Election Reform Committee and the Lobby.
Where'd you get number four? Number four is discretionary grants.
Discretionary grants, sorry.
Okay.
That's what they used to say in Saturday Night Live, "Never mind."
All right, so next comment? All right, Ms., next, Mr. Mosher.
Mayor Dixon, and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding item 7, which is the compensation plan for the city's 87 key and management employees, the managers and executives, I appreciate the revised salary schedule that we have here. I would like to question whether our salary schedule, I realize there was apparently an audit by CalPERS that made some changes to our previous salary schedule. I'm really wondering whether it really conforms to what the disclosure is we're supposed to make. Our city charter says the council is supposed to establish the salaries for each employee, and the CalPERS regulations that have to do with the salary schedule say the pay rate is supposed to be clearly identified for each identified position, either a single amount that we're paying the employee or multiple amounts within a range. Our schedule that is here for you to approve and that is on the city website is showing only a range. So somebody looking at this does not know actually what we're paying the employees with those job titles, some of which there's only one, some of which there's many. The regulation sounds like when there's only one, you should actually say what you're paying that person, and if there are several, it should show what the salaries are within the range. So I would like to make that comment. And then, second, I'm wondering if we could have an explanation of the gift that we're giving of $2,700 to all of the key and management employees, the 87 of them, who are working here at the city this day. This is something that was initiated back in 2015, 16, when agreements were changed. There was no explanation of that time of why we're giving a one-time cash payment to our employees. There's no explanation that I have seen here of why we're doing it today. It's not like it's something for good behavior, that you did a good job. It's not like something that you're promising to stay in the future. It's just if you're working here this day, you get $2,700. It sounds like a gift of public funds. If there is no commitment involved, you're just giving the money. So I think the public deserves an explanation of why that is not just a gift. There must be some motivation why we're doing that, and I have not seen, I did not see an explanation in 2016. I don't see an explanation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do you want to explain what that $2,700 payment is about? Please, thank you.
So I think there's a couple items that Jim raised. You know, first, he raised an issue about whether or not the salary schedule applies with the California Code of Regulations. And I will admit that CalPERS has kind of been a little bit all over the place with what they find acceptable, but it was discussed with them, and this is what they are looking for as far as the salary ranges go. In regards to the $2,700, I think that there's a lot of different terms in the agreements as far as things that are negotiated. That's one of the terms. The employees are also picking up a significant cost related to layuna. They're picking up several percentage points related thereto that goes back to the beginning of 2019. So that's an appropriate term to have in the key and management compensation plan, and you can proceed and move forward if that's the desire of the council.
And that the city had been paying that, and the employees are now agreeing to pick it up in terms of...
That's right. As far as the layuna contribution, it's going from 1.5%, I believe, to 2.9% the first year, and then goes up to 3.22% and keeps increasing thereafter. So I don't have the exact percentages, but it's definitely several percentage more as far as what the employees are picking up in regards to layuna costs.
That's correct. All right, bring it back up here. Oh, all right, one more.
Good evening, Denise Oberman. Just a quick comment. I concur with everything that Mr. Mosher said, and I would ask that the city properly characterize any kind of compensation that's awarded to employees so that it is defensible from an audit perspective, and gift is probably not a characterization that is appropriate in any organization, and in particular, in a public organization. It begets the question as to what is this in exchange for? So there are a number of other descriptors that would be more appropriate in a compensation policy, and I'm confident that our city manager has the background and experience to modify. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other comments up here? Any other public comments? Let's vote.
Yeah, hang on one second.
All right, I'm sorry.
This is not described as a gift anywhere in the staff report, or I just want to make that abundantly clear to everyone, this is not a gift. So, and it's not described that way. It's nowhere in the compensation agreement described as a gift. I just want, it's important that everyone understand that, because the $2,700, you can actually go back real quickly and look at our last couple meetings where we were approving bargain-for association agreements with our miscellaneous employee unions, where that was explained in detail. And in this staff report, it's also explained in detail as well. This is not a gift, and I frankly find, I take umbrage with that.
I agree. All right, shall we vote on the consent calendar excluding the items that have been polled?
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, the first item was item number 3 by Councilmember Brenner?
Yes. I originally had some questions about this anyway, as far as whether the size of a project would be a factor to be considered in the length of time we allow for something. We're talking about three years here for construction and two 180-day extensions. But is there any place that we consider what the size of that project would be? And then we got the memorandum from you saying that this was limited to two, you're proposing that it be limited to buildings under four units, or four or under units, and that those above that unit would not be included in our time limit. Is that true?
Thank you, Councilmember Brenner. Simone Georges, Community Development Director. So originally, the way we crafted the ordinance, it was really to focus it on more of residential, and it wasn't really to apply to commercial. The Building Industry Association had some concerns with the way the original language was drafted, and so we've proposed an amendment for you this evening, which was handed out to you. So the ordinance is much more specific now. So it only, it's specific towards single-family dwellings or duplexes. And the concern from the Building Industry Association is that if there is a tract of housing, which we've had, for example, maybe Eptide or Malaya Homes, where you're building several single-family dwellings, they had concerns about this affecting those types of projects, because those projects can be built in phases. So we have limited to this ordinance to a development that is maybe four single-family homes. And if you're on the fifth single-family home, this ordinance would not affect you. So again, it is strictly single-family and duplex, and it doesn't affect more of those larger tract housing projects, which we actually have a few of.
I do have a little bit more clarification on that, because I did tour the ARIA project, which is seven condominiums at the end of Ocean Boulevard this past weekend, and that project is being brought in, I think at almost our time limit, like four and a half or five years, and yet they're building seven condominiums there. And so they're doing it, and they've done it the right way, so the neighbors were not unduly impacted by that. But if we didn't have a regulation that included seven units, and they were not a good neighbor, and we had no regulation about how long a project like that would take, then we're back in another situation like we've been encountering in the past, where people are just under construction forever. So I'm wondering if we'd be better off with some sort of a formula that perhaps it would be longer if you had more units or something like that, but not giving them, not taking that out of our regulation completely.
So I do understand the concern. So with the ARIA project, which is seven condominiums, you're correct, this ordinance would not apply to that project. But the thinking behind more units or these bigger projects is that there's a lot more money at stake. And so you're dealing with, like ARIA project, and it's, you know, I want to, I'm going to throw out a number, say it's a $40 million project. That's something where a developer is not going to sit on, where you have maybe single-family homes, which are being paid maybe through cash or being managed by a, which we've seen maybe somebody who doesn't have experience in project management. ARIA is managed with a very professional development company, very professional contractor. So we don't see the risk with the larger projects. We just see the risk more in the smaller, single families that do occur throughout, which we get a lot of throughout the community.
Right. That makes sense.
Okay.
Mr. Muldoon, you have a question, please?
Oh, I just wanted to offer that, how do we pass this as-is? People are probably looking back, wondering what the intent was. I know my intent was single-family residences, perhaps duplexes. So I support this amendment if we want to discuss commercial or condominium, because I believe also there, the fear also is that it would apply to commercials, though we do so at a separate instance. But I think the problem is solved, and I know based on neighborhoods we talked about and the concerns, I was thinking entirely of single-family residences. Thank you.
Any other comments up here? All right. Ms. Brenner, you ready? All right, a public comment, please. Let's go to the public on item number 3.
Good evening. My name is Laura Curran in Coronet Del Mar. I want to thank the council for moving forward with item number 3. One of the elements of item number 3 really comes to talking about helping people understand what construction is taking place in their neighborhood. And so in the Coronet Del Mar Residents' Association, through several meetings, we gave the staff examples of big signs that can hang at project sites, and I took some of those in various cities. And I want residents to really be aware that there will be a sign where there'll be information about a project, the project number, who to call, and so we need to take advantage of that opportunity as it moves forward. And furthermore, this ordinance, we've talked about it in the residents' associations throughout the city over the past year. So if you're interested in issues like this, participate in those conversations with the city staff and the city council members throughout the year, including, of course, the Coronet Del Mar Residents' Association. And we'll be talking about this activity at our upcoming meeting, the annual meeting... And furthermore, this ordinance, we've talked about it in the residents' associations throughout the city over the past year. So if you're interested in issues like this, participate in those conversations with the city staff and the city council members throughout the year, including, of course, the Coronet del Mar Residents' Association. And we'll be talking about this activity at our upcoming meeting, the annual meetings on April 17th. If you have any questions about this ordinance, many members of staff will be there, and you can ask those questions directly. And I know they're going to bring an example of their sign, too. Thanks.
Laura, thank you for bringing that up because, Mr. Jurgis, we are going to have another study session on some recommended improvements to the construction activity issue. And we have bifurcated this because there was a legitimate issue about it. Maybe these impacts are not experienced all over the city, but in the high-density parts of the city. So you're coming back?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. We do have two more events. We do have a community meeting in the community room here on April 18th at 6:00 p.m. talking about the subject, and then we'll be back before the city council at the April 23rd meeting with a study session item with all the feedback we've received and more discussion.
Very good. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Susan Skinner, and I would like to ask you to consider reducing the time allowed for the completion of residential construction projects to two years instead of three years with the flexibility to allow for extensions if extenuating circumstances exist. The right to construct a home in a residential neighborhood must be weighed against the inconvenience of that construction to the neighbors. Certainly, we all accept the right of an owner to construct a new home, but I think we can make a clear argument that this construction should be completed as soon as reasonably possible to reduce the impact to the neighbors. Having a time limit of two years instead of three years for new home construction means that the owner needs to have financing lined up and make construction decisions in a timely fashion. Knowing that the clock is ticking is an excellent motivator. Having the ability to grant additional time for extenuating circumstances gives the city the flexibility to allow a reasonable accommodation, but it protects the residents from projects that are not moving forward. Three years is a very long time, time clock, for a project that is not progressing. In the port streets where I live, we had one of those nightmare projects where the homeowner ran out of money and actually lived in the unfinished home for five years before the city finally forced a sale. You know who that I'm talking about. The neighbors begged the city to act, but were told that nothing could be done. The ordinance is clearly needed, and I thank you for implementing it, but would ask you to consider a two-year timeframe instead of a three-year timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Adam Wood with the Building Industry Association. Just wanted to take, you know, can't really improve too much on Mr. Jurgis's presentation, so I just want to take a quick minute to say thank you for all the hard work they put in on the clarifying language that's before you tonight. And with that, we have no more concerns.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any more public comments?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First comment is I appreciate the April 18th community meeting, but I believe that's scheduled the same evening and hour as the planning commission will be meeting here to do a study session on two major projects that the public may be interested in. So really good if the city tried to, you know, schedule things so that they weren't on top of each other. The second comment I wanted to make is I think the change, the last-minute restriction here to residential projects only is probably the direction that the council was going in. That was the only comments I heard at the previous meeting. But one thing that has crept into the ordinance, which I don't know if you've carefully reviewed, is that the entity that issues these extension, makes the decision on the extension requests, and the ordinance is called the review authority. Sometimes the review authority is a hearing officer. Sometimes the review authority is the city council. However, if you look in your agenda packet on page 310, at the top of that, there's a provision in the ordinance that says the decision of the review authority shall not be appealable to any city body. I read that to mean that if the hearing officer either approves or denies an extension, that there is no opportunity to appeal that decision to the city council. I would be surprised if that was your intention, and if it's not, I would think you would ask somebody to correct that paragraph to reflect what your intention is. I would think you would want all decisions to be appealable to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment, public comments? Please come forward. Okay. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill, do you have a comment to make?
I'll move staff recommendation with the modification presented to us tonight.
Okay, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I will read the ordinance title, ordinance number 2019-8, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, California, adding Section 15.02.095 to the Newport Beach Municipal Code, setting time limits to complete construction, and pass to the second reading on April 23rd. With Councilmember Duffield voting no, the motion passes 6-1.
Okay. Mr. Hurdman, you polled item number five.
I did. Thank you, Mayor. While I'm pleased to see that the Subcommittee on Election Reform is about to be re-initiated, I'm at the same time very disappointed that I'm not being given the opportunity to work on this most important topic. After all, laws that cannot be enforced invite abuse. And that is clearly the case here in our city when it comes to election codes and ordinances, and has been since 2014. There are four specific elements that need to be dealt with in this work. Enforcement of our election laws, slate mail committees, registration of lobbyists, which is item number six on our consent calendar, and fundraising. The community is expecting a thorough and complete job to be done on this work, and I have researched, studied, and I'm prepared to do this work, and I have been for several years, yet I'm being deprived of doing so. A decision has been made to exclude me, and it just, it just isn't right. Thank you. I also want to recommend that five and six be combined together. These two items be put together because registration of lobbyists is a very important piece of election reform, and I don't see the need for a separate ad hoc committee to address this particular issue.
All right, do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I will. I'll put that in the form of a motion that, let's see. Aaron, help me out, will you?
Mr. Hurdman, do you mind if I help out?
Sure, that'd be great.
Just so you know, since I, and I'm only offering because I had put together a one on six, I'm fine with that, combining five and six.
Finding the two?
So five currently has it set up in the language of the resolution that if six is passed, then six would be taken out of the scope, but if six is not passed, then the lobbyist registration would be within the scope. So what I'm going to suggest is that we pass five, and then I will move to continue six indefinitely. I, excuse me, I will move to table six indefinitely.
Okay, thank you.
So if you make the motion to approve five, I'll do that as well.
Okay, I'll move staff recommendation on number five.
And I will second that.
Any other comments? All right, I'll go to the public. Any comments, please, on item number five?
Good evening again, Susan Skinner. And I'm here to applaud the resurrection of the Election Reform Committee and also ask that Jeff Hurdman be placed on this committee. It's Jeff's persistence in pursuing election reform that's a large part of the reason that we're having this discussion tonight. Election reform is really about leveling the playing field so that democracy can work as it's intended to work. When games are played with campaign financing such that no one can possibly tell where the money is originating from, democracy loses. When our city attorney declines to enforce our own city's campaign laws, democracy loses. When we don't know who is lobbying our city council behind the scenes, democracy loses. As an example of why reform is necessary, let's go back to the Museum House condo tower decision of 2016. The majority of the city council was elected with the help of Dave Ellis as their campaign consultant. However, Mr. Ellis was also apparently a lobbyist for the Museum House. I say apparently because there is no requirement for him to register as a lobbyist, something that many other cities do require. I only know that he was a lobbyist because the Museum House developer, Bill Witty, acknowledged it to me at the time. The word on the street was that Mr. Ellis would have had a payday of $800,000 if the Museum House had been built. I have no idea if that's true or not, but did he lobby the council intensively? Councilman Curry commented that he did on the evening that the council approved the project, and they approved the project despite the comments from over 2,000 residents opposed to this project. Was that a level playing field? I think not. I appreciate the discussion of campaign reform and urge this council to create strong enforceable rules regarding lobbying and the flow of money into campaigns that will give the residents reasonable assurance that we know who is seeking to influence whom in our city and to allow us to vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Guess that's not going to go up. Good evening, council. My name is Lynn Lorenz, and I'm here tonight to share with you a letter which was posted this afternoon on Stu News and was signed by 50 residents. We are shocked to learn that Mayor Diane Dixon plans to create an election committee and appoint two fellow Team Newport council members to it, but not Jeff Hurdman. Campaign finance reform was part of the platform that got Councilman Hurdman elected. He was on the original committee formed in 2017, which never met, by the way, and he's the one who asked for it to be reinstated. It was also Jeff Hurdman who called out the 44 campaign finance violations that appear to have been committed in 2014 by Team Newport members Dixon, Duffy, Pieter, and Muldoon, and their campaign consultant and treasurer. They are currently negotiating a settlement with the FPPC. Will O'Neill and Brad Avery are from the second wave of Team Newport and use the same consultant and treasurer. They've been appointed to oversee campaign finance reform despite these ties, and even though they have never, to our knowledge, expressed any interest in this issue. Why don't, why doesn't one of them step aside and give a seat to Jeff Hurdman, who's been talking to the community about this since 2014? The real concern for us as citizens is that Team Newport controls five of seven council seats. It was six until Joy Brenner beat Pieter last year, and can use that majority to deny those who have challenged them the chance to serve on committees that will impact future elections. This campaign finance reform committee is only one example. They can also keep passing the mayor and mayor pro tem titles around among themselves, which is what they've been doing since 2015. This gives them great power over the agenda as well as commissions and committees. If this game of musical chairs doesn't stop, long-term residents who want to serve on the council merely to give back to the community like Jeff Hurdman may just become too disgusted to run for office. Maybe it's time for Newport to directly elect its mayor. Or perhaps residents simply need to rise up and demand to see a new face in the mayor's seat next year. Someone who's not part of any team and will appoint fellow council members to committees based on their knowledge and their passion rather than their political alliances. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Jennifer McDonald. This is actually the first time I've ever spoken at a council meeting. So I'd like to start by thanking all of you for your service and the time you devote to the city, especially after hearing your oral reports. I want to speak tonight to the mayor's proposal to exclude Councilman Hurdman from the Election Reform Committee. The letter that was just read gives all the reasons why Councilman Hurdman is, in fact, the best candidate of all of you to serve on that committee, which leaves us wondering why he's being kept away from it. And I see two possible reasons, both of which would be wrong. The first is the FPPC complaints that were filed by Jeff Hurdman in 2014 against Team Newport and the campaign consultant and treasurer used by five of you, including two who've been appointed to the committee. Filing those complaints was, in my view, an act of love for the city. If you lived in the same city for 60 years and suddenly saw the municipal code being violated with impunity, and you saw campaign finance laws being broken, and you knew it could affect the outcome of elections, you would file a complaint, too. And it was the right thing to do since the FPPC agreed that these violations had been committed. So if anything, this qualifies Councilman Hurdman to chair the Election Reform Committee, not to be kept away from it. The other justification that I hope you're not using in this decision is the complaint that was filed recently against Councilman Hurdman by a longtime Team Newport supporter right before this issue came back on the agenda. I was here a month ago when the person who filed that complaint brandished it and said this is a down payment on payback. It was a trivial complaint. It was about the omission of a legal mention on the newsletters that Councilman Hurdman spends his own time preparing to keep the community informed. So the complaints that he lodged went to the heart of campaign finance laws. They were about a failure to properly report contributions. But the complaint against him is an absolutely inconsequential one. You know, if I poured over every communication that you ever sent out and every report that you ever filed, it's possible that I would be able to find something to report to the FPPC, and you would all have open investigations against you. I wouldn't do that. Those are public resources. I wouldn't waste them. But I think you get my point. The last thing I want to say is that at any time over the past four years, Councilman Hurdman could have informed the community and the press that these complaints were being investigated by the FPPC. He could have done that right before the election last year, and it could have cost votes, and it could have potentially cost the election. But he didn't do that because it wasn't about politics for him. So political retaliation is not an appropriate response. In sum, there's no good reason to keep Councilman Hurdman off this committee. He campaigned on election reform, and we residents are counting on him to deliver it, and allowing him to do so is the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Honorable Mayor Dixon and council. I'm Marko Popovich, resident for 50 years, homeowner for 40 or something like that. Anyway, I've been a longtime resident, and I think the letter that's been read here makes sense, and there's been no public opposition to, you know, no public opposition to Mr. Hurdman being on the committee. And I'd ask that he be on both committees if there remain several, both five and six there. And if you decide otherwise, I would ask you to address us here in public as to the reason that you are excluding Jeff Hurdman. Thank you, and I hope to hear from you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. And on a slightly different aspect of this, I'd like to point out the obvious that the title of the committee is it's researching election reform and making suggestions about that. Elections involve more than just money and campaigns and financial violations. There are reforms that we could make in the city about how elections are conducted mechanically that would be beneficial to our city. I believe that by the time of our next election in 2020, that the registrar of voters in Orange County would be able to implement such beneficial things as giving us the opportunity to have instant runoff voting so that we wouldn't have, when we have a three-way race, that the, it wouldn't necessarily be a person being elected who has less than 50% support through an instant runoff process. Some reforms of that sort might require changes to our city charter as well as our municipal code. So I'm wondering if you are creating this committee, if you would like to give it that wider scope, and if you are, where it says here, just looking at the municipal code, should it say the municipal code and charter? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon of City Council. My name is Philip Greer. Over the past few years, the politics here in Newport Beach have become quite acrimonious. Our community has been polarized through personal attacks, and policy agendas designed primarily for political advantage and retribution. It's stifled community growth. And to be quite candid, I've been part of the rancor, but so have many of you who sit up there today, and I think it's time to move on. In 1978, Orange County, depending upon your... In 1978, Orange County, depending upon your perspective, was either at the peak of our political arc or was at the death of our political dysfunction. Out of this confusion rose a woman named Shirley Grindel. I pretty much disagreed with everything that Ms. Grindel had to say, but I agreed and respect and admire what she accomplished. Ms. Grindel was the founder of what's called Tin Cup, which was the original political campaign finance laws for the county of Orange. She created and established the laws which basically held politicians, campaign managers, and financiers accountable to what was going on politically. Around 1992, politicians, lawyers, campaign consultants, and others had finally figured out Tin Cup and designed ways to get around it. So Shirley began to push for Tin Cup, too. At the time, the board of directors, board of supervisors was, as our city council is now, controlled by a small group of politicians, consultants, and political operatives. After much debate and community outrage, the board established an independent citizens committee to review Tin Cup and to make recommendations for changes and revisions. The citizens committee was diverse in both the politics and its perspective. Some members, such as Shirley Grindel and attorney Mario Manero, sought radical campaign reform. Other members, such as Senator John Lewis, political consultant Adam Probowlski, and political attorney Phil Greer, sought to maintain the status quo. Nobody liked the findings and recommendations of the committee, which meant that the group achieved good results with reasoned, reasonable recommendations. Both sides saw that the benefit of compromise was better than legislation that hurt everybody. Now this council has an opportunity to do the same thing. In creating the general plan committee, the council listened to the public and modified its structure to bring in more diversity and more expansive views of both issues and goals. As such, I would suggest that the election reform committee be expanded and that each city council member be charged with seeking a public member to join that committee to bring in diversity. Do you otherwise? Essentially, what you should do is you should expand the committee, and I hate reading things. Expand the committee, bring in some public people like you did with the general plan commission, and I think you'll have a much better way, and I think it'll go a lot, long way towards bringing this community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon, city council, my name is Bob Rush. I'd like to begin by giving this confirmation that the FPP is kicking off its investigation into the complaint that I filed a few weeks ago, as the young lady spoke about. It's not trivial, it's law, and it's not for one person to determine which laws they follow and which laws they don't follow. The simple matter is that Mr. Heardman has a long history of unethical behavior, going back to way before me. Having leaked confidential information to the attorney who was just before you while in the midst of a lawsuit against the city is just one example. That was not a trivial matter. It's not a trivial matter that they're going to take this investigation on 30 different violations of the same. It's not going to be a trivial matter with, I bring forward, the next set of complaints that are going to be personally related to enriching himself with certain things he's doing through city council. So I don't think that Councilman Heardman is a good person to put on the committee for any reason. I don't, you know, his personal support here doesn't take into account these infractions that have occurred until now and the ones that I'm going to bring forth from this point forward. I'll be here all year long, back and back and back, and they're free to say that they're trivial, but they're going to impact him eventually. The fines will continue to stack up, and we'll see where we are, but to include this gentleman in the formation of an ad hoc committee is, I think, the wrong way to start that ad hoc committee. Number two, I question the constitutionality of the ad hoc committee, and particularly what I've heard and ideas that it would politicize and weaponize the city attorney's office. That would be a horrible thing, because Mr. Heardman would be able to further his unethical behavior and exert influence in not being investigated. I have a problem with that. I have a problem with Mr. Harp becoming a weapon against any one of you or any one of us. I have a problem with that. I have a problem not with Mr. Harp, but his predecessors are horrible people. Some of them are terrible. They advocated for wide over-concentration of rehabs in the city. I'll let that go at that. I don't want to see the city attorney's office weaponized. With that said, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
You're going to get a lot of me tonight. I'm really, I'm really disappointed. I supported many of you, and I do feel very strongly that Mr. Heardman is the person that is a key person that does need to participate in this initiative, and specifically the committee or the bundled committees. The other thing I'd like to say in this regard is you all vote and repeat about, every one of you has spoken of transparency, and I have seen nothing but progressive opacity coming out of this council and the city, and it's becoming institutionalized in our policies and our ordinances, and I can't tell you how disturbing that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, let's bring it back to the dais. Mr. O'Neill? Mayor Pro Tem?
I think that's left over. I think it's time to vote.
All right. Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you, yes. When I was mayor, as the staff report said, in 2017, we relaunched ad hoc committee. I thought it was a great idea. At the time, I was notified as sort of an add-on that the FPPC wanted to discuss my campaign. My camp, I was not familiar with what was being alleged, and FPPC, now I'm in communications with them, and they essentially tell me, we understand you know, you didn't know what was going on. Still, when I was notified of this, I immediately thought, I don't want to be involved in this committee. It would be wrong for me to steer a subject matter that's currently going on with my campaign. And to be honest, I'm surprised that people aren't acknowledging the wisdom in that, that you're going to steer, or perhaps steer away from yourself, consequences that your campaign could be facing. I find that to be shocking, unethical, not transparent, and corrupt. I have seen so many things here at the city dais level. These conspiracy theories will come forward to us, or only one council member, you know, is a good person, and I'll tell you, I may not disagree with everything that all my colleagues do, but I find almost every one of them to be incredibly kind, considerate, open, not transpiring, or conspiring, I should say, excuse me, to do some ill to the city. Phil Greer lobbies me more than almost anyone else in the city, and he's a friend. I take his calls all the time, and I think Phil and others will have no time becoming registered lobbyists, I'm sorry, have no problem becoming a registered lobbyist. I don't think that that's really an issue for any lobbyists who do business in the city in Newport Beach. What I take offense to is the notion that this new committee that's created with people who have no campaigns dealing with FPPC is somehow not qualified. I believe Brad Avery, Will O'Neill, and Joy Brenner would be upstanding residents who would do a great job on that committee, and quite frankly, I'm sure every one of us would if we decided that it would be okay for us to be involved while we're also being involved with FPPC. I personally think it's not okay to be doing this while being involved with FPPC. That's my reasoning. I do not believe there's a conspiracy behind it. I do not believe that any of my colleagues are plotting against the city or looking to do anything that is unethical, and I find it short-sighted just to simply say that one person up here is perfect in all things and the rest of you have poor judgment. I think it's, it's really not reflected by the voting results in this last election. I know it's not how the majority of the city feels, and I'll tell you that from this side, it's completely inaccurate.
I just want to just, Mr. Muldoon was saying what I was going to conclude this discussion with, that the three members that I have nominated, and I take responsibility for that, are three members of the council who do, have not had any interactions, their campaign committees have not had any interactions with the FPPC. That's Councilmember Brenner, Councilmember Avery, and Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill. They have, their campaign committees have not had any interactions with the FPPC. I was looking for people who are totally objective, totally unbiased, and have, of course, integrity and ethics that are unparalleled, as everyone on this council, I could say, is the same. So they are objective, impartial, and independent, and I trust that they can give due diligence to considering ways to strengthen, underline, bold-faced strengthen our campaign and election and lobbying laws where needed, and report back to the council with their recommendations. And they, the committee will define the scope of their work, and now that it's consolidated with lobbying, that makes perfect sense, and I look forward, as all members of the public should, to receiving the recommendations, and this is not some, let me say positively, this is an effort to bring reform by three members, proposed and studied by three members of our council. I certainly welcome Mr. Heardman's contributions if he wants to submit his recommendations, the result of his many years of work. I think that would be a notable contribution to the committee. No one's preventing him from doing that. So I would like to just move on, and I look forward to the committee's good work and their recommendations, and so we'll move forward. Any other comments up here? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your name. Ms. Brenner.
I found Phil's comments interesting about the citizen participation in the committee that he was talking about, and I'm wondering if we would want to expand this committee to include some citizens.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, well, I would, and I'd also like to say that I've told you that I would have preferred that Jeff were on this committee, because I know he's been working on it for a very long time, and I feel like he has actually more expertise on it than I do. I'd be willing to step down if the council supported, wanted to support putting Jeff on this committee, but I do think we need to talk about that and about citizen involvement in this committee.
All right, would you like to put it in the form of a motion?
Yes. Could we expand our committee so that each member have one citizen appointee to be included? I believe Phil's other comment was that Aaron, that if Aaron were part of this committee, there would be some legal, we would have Will already, but also some legal expertise, and that would make an odd number on the committee if we had three citizens, three council members, and Aaron. So that would be the motion.
All right, I'll second that motion. Any comment? Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
I would suggest, I would suggest you try out what has been recommended on a trial basis and see how it works out before expanding it out, because once you, once you expand it out and you give everyone nominees, I've seen what it looks like in Irvine. It gets heavily politicized very quickly, and it becomes, it becomes a problem where everyone's designated, feels beholden, and then you start in, down this weird rabbit hole. I think that we're going to find that the subcommittee comes back with some pretty strong recommendations. I can tell you right now, I mean, certainly on lobbyist reform and registration, this was something that was important enough to me to agendize it. We're coming back with, with good recommendations, good ideas, and I think I would trust, I would trust the process on this one without letting it get any more politicized than I think we've seen a couple of comments tonight. Seem to, seem to make it. I'd rather see a, I'd rather see some kind of consensus come out of the council where we are the ones who are elected to make these kinds of decisions in the first place, and if we fail, then we haven't done our jobs, and then we turn it over into a citizen ad hoc. But on this basis, I would, I would recommend we go back to, to the original, to what's been recommended on, by staff.
Any other, any comments? So we have a...
Well, there's been a motion, a substitute motion, and I think the only appropriate thing at this point would be to do some kind of tabling, but I don't particularly want a table. That seems aggressive in this context, and so my, my point is simply, I, if I vote against this, I'd vote for the original motion.
Mr. Avery?
I agree with Will in the sense that with Joy on the committee, I think anything that was off course here, you would hear about it in a hurry. So I think, you know, she, she has no problem speaking here. There's some distrust apparently of me in this, you know, and, and that's not fun to hear, but I get it, you know, and optics do matter, so, but I've done my best over the last two years to represent the city in the fairest way that I possibly can, and I think that's reflected in a lot of my votes. But I think, I would like, I would urge Joy to just try it out, and then if it's not going well, you can just, for us, just say, it's not working, I really want to turn this around, and I'd be, I'd be there with you.
That's acceptable to me.
So you'll withdraw your motion?
Yes, and I would like to add something, that I don't actually see this as public distrust of the other members of this committee, I think, at all. I agree with what Kevin said, that I do think, I have trust in the integrity of this entire council. I really do, and I think it's, you know, people see it one way, and they would, they want to be heard, and they feel like that Jeff has put in the time, and they would like to see him on this committee, but I don't think it's a personal reflection on the other members that have been appointed so far.
Okay. Brad, is this, again?
Yeah, just one more.
Okay, go ahead.
So there's some, there's still clearly some digging out we need to do to get the community at a level of comfort, that what goes on here, whether it's in a committee, whether it's up here on the dais, whether it's a closed session, that it's, use the overused word, transparent, and obviously, sometimes it's difficult to be totally transparent with closed session, but I get completely what some of the issues Jim brings up, and I think we will work on those. It's, it's a ship going along, and it's hard to turn it anyway, in a sharp course correction, but we're going to get there. But I do completely understand the digging out that needs to be done to get the trust, and so I think this is going to be a really good show on that, because everyone's focused on it. It's, it comes to the heart of the matter, really, and so I think this is a council prerogative, I believe, at least at the start, and I know Jeff feels badly. The mayor, I don't, Mayor Dixon asked me to serve on the committee. I accepted. Lots of, all of us end up on the outside of a committee we would like to serve on at one time or another. We don't get picked. These committees are three, and so the mayor has to make a decision, and we can lobby and do what we want, but I didn't lobby for this. The mayor chose me. I think she expressed the reason why, and it, you know, there's disappointment there, and I totally get what my fellow council member feels, because he has put a lot of work on this, but I also strongly believe that I got a pretty good grasp of those four key elements, and I know Will does, and I know Joy does, so I think we can deliver on this. Thank you.
I thank you. Mr. Heardman?
I, if I'm not, and I'm obviously not going to be able to serve on this committee, I would ask that the committee would grant me the opportunity to at least have an initial opportunity to talk to them as a committee. I don't know how that would work, because there would be four of us in the same room, and it wouldn't work. Okay. Shaking your head. All right, what I'll do is work through Joy. Thank you.
Well, you can't do that either. You can't have four council members on, on the ad hoc committee, and you can't work through another council member.
Can he submit, as I suggested?
Can I submit something in writing to Joy?
Or to the committee?
To Joy. Can I do that?
Well, I think, I think we'll have to have a further discussion about it. You can't have, you basically can't come to a consensus of four of the members of the council.
have, you basically can't come to a consensus of four of the members of the council. It's awfully hard, if Joy knows, like, what your position is on different items.
Okay.
And she's one of the other three members, to not say that that's a violation of the Brown Act.
Okay.
Okay.
Hang on, let me see if I can, let's, let's figure this out. It's important.
But he's welcome to say anything he'd like this evening. I mean, he could say whatever's on his mind this evening.
To be fair, though, so he's got, he's, he said he's done years of research. Can he submit a packet of written materials that would be then publicly available to everyone, including the committee?
I think he could do that, as long as it doesn't express his opinion about it. If it's just his research, just not saying what his opinion is on the various items.
All right, I'll tell you what. We'll, we'll figure this out, but we'll make sure that Jeff's research is incorporated in.
And let me just say, too, that I look forward to, as I said in my earlier comments, recommendations to this council to strengthen, strengthen, strengthen our campaign and election and lobbying laws where needed. And I look forward and welcome that, and I think it is time that we receive these. And they may, as Mr. Moser suggested, include a proposed charter amendment or two. So, I, as mayor, give full scope, full rein, open, transparent season on election and lobbying forum in Newport Beach, and let's be world-class in our efforts. So, that is my recommendation. And I think we're ready for a vote? Did we do public comment? Yes, we're ready to vote. On the original motion? Do we have an original motion?
You have an original motion.
Yes, okay. Let's vote.
With Council Hurdman voting no, the motion passes six to one.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Item six has been pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were done here. Hold on, excuse me. Wait a minute. Item six.
On item six, on item six, I move to table this indefinitely.
And that will be incorporated into?
No, this is a new motion. It's, it's technically a separate item, so I'm moving to motion, I'm moving to table this item indefinitely.
All right.
Have a second.
All right. Do any comment up here? Is that you, Mr. Hurdman? Are you still there?
No, I'm not.
Okay, and I'll open to the public. Untabling this item number six. Seeing no comments, coming back. Any comments? Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward, please.
Good evening. My name is Susan Skinner, and I simply want to address that Jeff, I think you do a wonderful job. I see you as an ethical, straight-up guy that's doing the best that he can do. And we all know that the complaints to the FPPC have been weaponized. There absolutely are complaints to the FPPC that are made, that are appropriate, that are the equivalent of a, of a felon while driving. What you've done is the equivalent of a, of a ticket. And I would be willing to spend a lot of money to go to Las Vegas and put down a bet that the FPP is going to look at it and really reject Mr. Rush's complaints. Mr. Rush has been particularly challenging for me to deal with. He has been personally attacking me, and I think that's just his character. So, I don't want you to take that personally, because I think you're wonderful. So, I really appreciate everything you've done. And I also appreciate for the whole council, I mean, even though we disagree on many things, you know, it's a lot of time and energy and effort that you guys put into this, and I appreciate that. I'm still going to arm wrestle you on the things that I think are important, but, but I think you do, you know, you put a lot of time and, and energy into what you're doing. And Brad, I think you're a straight-up guy. I think you'll do a really good job on this committee, and, you know, I think it'll turn out okay. So, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Mayor, Councilman, my name is Ron Yo, 604 Iris, Cronotamar Village. Our unique villages are the five best things that make Newport Beach great. One's the ocean, two's the bay, three's the villages that surround the water, four is our citizens that live in these villages, and of course, the weather is the next one. As a CDM resident for 56 years, I take maintaining and enhancing the village character very seriously. And I'm kind of concerned and worried about Mariners Mile. As I drive out Jamboree, I see this huge block of giant condos being built, and I says, "Is this what's really going to end up potentially in Mariners Mile?" And I really get concerned about that, and I just wanted to share that with you. There's obviously a lot of issues in, in West Newport, excuse me, West Coast Highway, but there's also a great potential of really having a vital pedestrian village that has restaurants, retail, water-oriented businesses, as well as protecting the view to the bay, which is one of the most important things there. So, I urge the council, the staff, to do everything in their power to help make West Coast Highway live up to its great potential. It's a world-class, active area for pedestrians and all of our citizens. Basically, keep Newport, Newport. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please, non-agenda items.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Honorable Mayor Dixon, and honorable council members. My name is Ryan Reza Farsi, and I'm here to make a public statement today in, in the public records. I wrote a letter to the Department of Treasury, and I'm also going to say it over here. The purpose of this letter is to get the certification of my two Opportunity Zone investment vehicles in California under the corporation H&amp;M, Inc., doing business as Arco Fullerton and FL Harbor LLC, which is the business and property at 519 South Harbor Boulevard in Fullerton, California, and 92832. In Oregon, operating as myself with an investment vehicle, the real property of 48.9 acres at 1330 West Main Street, Sheridan, Oregon, 97378. I will be reorganizing my Yoga Exchange California Corporation to an Oregon Corporation at both Opportunity Zones. Addresses, will be focusing on improving the income of the nearby tract, as well as improving everyone's health. Also, the farm property in the opportunities includes two wells, of one which is attached, which will be also be worked on in the future to bring all the good water of Oregon to all the people. The water is delicious. So, thank you for your consideration. This was sent to the White House, the Supreme Court, Governor Brown of Oregon, Governor Newsom of California, the U.S. Postal Inspector, and Department of Justice, Mr. William Barr. Again, that's permit number is 49597, with the priority date of December 31, 1907, for the, one of my wells, which we'll be using.
Sir, sir, your comments have to be focused on something within the subject matter jurisdiction.
It is, it is within the subject matter of California. It's under your jurisdiction.
Newport Beach.
It is under, it is under California. So, the reason I'm having this discussion is because I was going back and forth for the last few years. I didn't fight my HOA. I didn't fight some of these cities that we have difficulty with, that have taken some of our property illegally, or tried to take it. I didn't sue any of my business partners. So, this is one of the reasons this is all happening to me. So, the guru's work in the world is to alleviate the sorrows of mankind. The guru's mind is unimpollutable, is not affected. Four methods used by gurus to accomplish these facts are through spiritual means, intellectual powers, willpower, and fourth, the physical transformation of disease. So, I don't know how this all ended up, but I'm sitting there at Belcourt Park, but we got lucky. We missed that environmental issue, Mr. Muldoon, that you got to be looking into in your district. So, somehow it missed us at Belcourt Park, but we need help on the rest of the toys. Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We obviously, we obviously have a problem with the mic. Let's use this mic over here, and can we get this fixed? Please, thank you. Sir, please.
Mayor Dixon, City of the Council members, my name is Luke Drew. First thing I wanted to do is I attended the meeting on, the town hall meeting on Saturday, and I just wanted to commend you, Mayor Dixon, for stepping in, taking control of the meeting, and turning it from chaos into a productive meeting. And there's a few facts that I wanted to highlight that were brought up at that meeting. Although, the city is 11th in population of the 34 cities in the county, with the second highest economic structure, and we're second only to Anaheim in the amount of occupancy taxes presented to the county. I thought that citizens might enjoy those facts.
Thank you so much. Any other speakers? Please come forward. You might want to stand in line then, if there are a few people, so we can just move a little quicker. We only have one microphone, so please line up. Thank you so much.
Marco Popovich, moving as quick as I can here. I asked you before to address as to why y'all excluding Jeff Hurdman from that. So, if you'll, please answer the question. And secondly, why and for how long have you tabled item six? That's all for me. I'm asking you that question, please.
Well, we can't directly ask us questions.
Okay.
But I, we will provide an answer for you. So, thank you. I think I provided an answer, and I explained that the three members who I appointed have not, their campaign committees have not had any interaction with the FPPC, so they are totally objective and, and unbiased in their FPPC mindset.
I remember that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the other answer is indefinitely. It's not coming back. Okay?
Thank you.
Next speaker, please, on non-agenda items.
Good evening, once again. I wanted to thank the council for, for its attention to the issue of improved construction management controls. I think there, there is a lot that can be done, and, and it's a broader scope than the schedule, so I appreciate it. She's attempting to put a picture up, maybe just a second one. I don't know if you'll be able to see it. I'll bring it next time. This is a continuation of my comments at the prior staff meeting, and after three and a half years of basically attempting to work with the city and a number of hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal and forensic expense, I am here to ask the council to restore my property rights, which were taken away by a very simple request. I'd like the city to take an enforcement action that I, I am confident is within its authority and is consistent with both its ordinances and its responsibility to the public. Specifically, I'd like to direct the removal of block wall that was constructed on my property without my agreement, and its replacement where the parties alleged that they put it, which was on their property. According, I'd like it placed within the true property line that was verified by the County of Orange and after extensive legal processes. The removal of this wall is necessary. You may say, "Why am I asking for this? Why am I being so insistent?" Well, the removal of the wall is necessary to restore my side setback and my fire and life safety clearance. I have no way to mitigate with this, other than the removal of this wall. I can't tear my house down. And it's particularly important to me, because my partner, as it happens, has the same type of heart condition that the woman tragically spoke of earlier, cardio, cardiomyopathy, severe obstructive hypertrophic cardiomyopathy, to be specific. Anyway, I would like, I would like my side setback restored, as it was for over 60 years. And I would like the restoration, not only of my fire and safety clearance, but the full use and enjoyment of my property and my full property rights. I know it's within the authority and the ability of the council or direct staff to do this, and I would greatly appreciate it if I could get a response and we could get this resolved in a prompt manner and avoid any unnecessary and unpleasant kinds of legal actions coming from any party. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I know staff is looking at us, just taking some time.
That's fine. Thank you. I appreciate it, Mayor Dixon, I do. Those pictures are available if somebody would like to physically understand the situation. I won't belabor it tonight, but I will enter it into evidence for review at a later time. And I know it's an issue not only to me, but it is the type of issue that's occurring with many residents throughout the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next comment on non-agenda item? Any further comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move into public hearing, number, item number 13, to amend the local coastal program implementation plan to include Balboa Village Parking Management Overlay District. And we have Mr. Juergis and Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members. Simon Juergis, Community Development Director. With me, I have Patrick Alfred, who's our Planning Manager. This item is our parking, our Balboa Village Parking Management Overlay. We do have this overlay in our, in our zoning code, Title 20. It just never made it into Title 21. These are some of the cleanup items we're working on with our Title 21, which is our local coastal program. Madam Mayor, if you like, we do have a short presentation, or we could answer questions.
Does anyone up here need a presentation? Nope. I think you could just answer questions if anybody has questions. Jeff, Mr. Hurdman, do you still have a question here?
No, can you take that?
It's stuck. You have a perpetual question. Okay. Any questions? Let's open it up to the public. Please come forward. On item number 13, Balboa Village Parking Management.
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name, as you know by now, is Jim Moser. And on this item, I would call your attention on the second page of the staff report, where it says funding requirements. It says there is no fiscal impact related to this item. I understand that the actual process of pushing your little buttons on the terminals tonight is not going to cost anything. But if this goes before the Coastal Commission, I would assume, staff is assuming, that you're authorizing them to engage our favorite coastal advocate, who charges us something like $300 an hour. So, I think there will be some cost involved in getting this approved by the Coastal Commission. And this is for a parking management plan for Balboa Village. If it was approved by the Coastal Commission, somebody is going to have to come up with the plan. It looks from this like the plan is going to be rather lengthy and detailed. I would think there's going to be some cost involved in preparing that plan. And then finally, whatever the plan is that comes out, I would assume there's going to be some ongoing cost to managing and administering the plan. So, I would think you need a more accurate estimate of what the funding requirement is before you do your voting on this. As to the resolution itself, there's a tiny typo in it that you might want to correct before you vote. This is on page 13-6 of the staff report at the bottom of the page. It's, it's relaying in the resolution what the Planning Commission action was on this. It says, "The vote there was four ayes, zero noes, and three abstentions." If you look at the Planning Commission minutes, you will see that it was not three abstentions. There were three planning commissioners who were absent. It would be very unusual for the planning commissioners to abstain and not want to vote on this. So, you might want to correct the resolution to say that. And there's some other typos that are in the actual body of what's being proposed, but I'm sure the Coastal Commission will correct those in their review process. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mary S. Mozenas, and my husband and I are property owners and residents, and we do own some properties in the Balboa Village. And we would like you to approve this amendment. We had sent an email a little earlier, and basically, it is consistent with the Balboa Village master plan outlined in 2012. And it, it is essential for the small-sized lots for the, that are zone-mixed use. Right now, as they stand, with the parking requirements and all the different zoning regulations, it's, it's pretty... it's pretty, very, very difficult to do anything with regards to improvement or building on those lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, please come forward.
Hi, Mayor Dixon and council members. I'm Kelly Carlson. I'm the president of the Balboa Village Merchant Association. It's a long one. And my husband and I also own Balboa Water Sports and Balboa Beach and Bicycle Boutique. We also are property owners, and I guess we would be the fourth house from Adams, which would be right outside of Balboa Village District, so we're very entrenched in what's going on. And on behalf of the merchants and a resident, I just want to thank city staff for all the hard work they've done on this. As everyone knows, I've come up a few times and said, we need help in Balboa Village. And I think that this is really great because it's keeping the neighborhood feel. The peninsula, you should be riding your bike, you should be walking places, and people aren't driving from one business to the next business. So some of these parking restrictions have really kept us from getting new business uses in there, which we need, because we can't depend on stuff that was happening 20 or 30 years ago. So I just want to thank everyone from city staff and Diane, who have been a huge part of keeping, pushing this through. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none? Any comments? Mr. Mayor Protam.
I'll entertain Jim's comments. So 13-6 references four i's, zero n's, three abstentions. Should it technically be three absences?
That's correct. I attribute that to autocorrect.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
I just wanted to concur with the speakers in regards to the difficulty of running a small business down there. We want to encourage certainly the success of the small businesses in Balboa Village, which notoriously come and go, and to get some more stability down there. And in another lifetime, I ran a business down there for four years. And it was a boat sailing club, boat rental operation, and it was really difficult. And I think I got to know some of the other business owners, and wintertime comes and it's really tough. I think everybody knows that. So I'd just like to give my support to these business owners, and this is doing a great job of it, I think, giving them some relief from some of the parking restrictions that these businesses have in terms of providing it. They're working on parking all the time down there, but we've just got to do everything we can to help that village remain, not remain, but get more vibrant and have a successful bunch of businesses down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
I did have a question about Jim's comments as far as, are we hiring a Coastal Commission consultant? Is there a cost for that? Do we have someone chosen that does that for us? I'm sort of a novice on this, so I may ask the asking questions.
That's a good question, that's fine.
Thank you, Councilmember Brenner. Typically, we would submit the application to the Coastal Commission and really sit back and wait for a while until they had a chance to review. We do have a consultant, Don Schmitz. Many of you do know him. He is our Coastal Consultant. We haven't decided whether we are going to use him or not use him. It just depends on really what's the comment and feedback we get from the Coastal Commission staff. And if they are, if they're really supportive of this and they're on board, then we don't feel like we need to hire Don. So it depends. We don't make that decision yet for another, maybe six months, until they come back with comments to us.
Would we be consulted about that, or would that be just automatic?
The Coastal Commission staff would reach out to us and have a conversation with us. I'm sorry.
If we were to hire, retain his services?
Yeah, he's, we have an on-call agreement with Don Schmitz. So we can, it's an on-call agreement, so we can utilize him at any time that we'd like. So he hasn't been hired specifically for this project. We just have him on-call with an actual on-call agreement.
Okay, so that, I mean, my understanding, and we, the council, the previous council in 2015 approved this. Coastal Commission said, wait, we were going through our implementation plan, going, the LCP, and the implementation plan going for coastal in 2016, and they asked the city to pull out of certain things and wait and advance them at a later date. And that is what we're doing. So I don't know how much heavy lobbying is really going to be done. I will say, or needed, I will say that business owners and commercial real estate brokers have said to me, this is a game changer in Balboa Village because it removes the mandatory parking, that certain businesses can't, restaurants, for example, can't guarantee where they can find eight parking spaces. There's no, there are no eight parking spaces to find. So it really will be a stimulus to economic activity in Balboa Village. So seeing no more comments, let's go to vote, please.
We haven't made a motion? I'll make a motion to amend the local coastal program. All right. Thank you for reminding me.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Next item, under current business, Sculpture Garden Exhibit in Civic Center Park. This is Phase Four, so this is an exciting program that has achieved institutional status. So staff report. Are we going to make a staff report with some pictures in it, I presume?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and members of the City Council. I'm your Library Services Manager, Natalie Bossmudge, and I also serve as the staff liaison to the City Arts Commission. The City Arts Commission, in conjunction with Arts Orange County, has been planning the next phase of the sculpture in the Civic Center Park here on the grounds. The City Arts Commission conducted several special meetings to consider and recommend submissions for Phase Four of the Sculpture Garden. Rick Stein, President and CEO of Arts Orange County, is here this evening to present an overview of the project, including public input and descriptions of the recommended sculptures. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'm Rick Stein, and I'm the President and CEO of Arts Orange County. We are the nonprofit arts council designated by your Board of Supervisors as the official local arts agency for the County of Orange. And it's been our pleasure to work with the City of Newport Beach on a number of projects, and this is the fourth time that we've had the pleasure of working with your community, with your staff, and with you this evening on the fourth phase of the sculptures in Civic Center Park. Members of my team are here this evening, Joe Lewis, actually right here, who is Professor of Art at UC Irvine and former dean of the Claire Trevor School of the Arts, and Nicholas Thirketel, Program Assistant at Arts Orange County. Both were integrally involved in the management of this project. You have an extensive staff report, so I'm going to keep this very brief, but I did want to summarize the fact that our role as a consultant is not to select the artworks for the sculpture park. We are here to facilitate, to manage the call for artists, to over 100,000 artists nationwide, to review their eligibility and the completeness of their submissions, to recruit art experts to join the Arts Commission in reviewing those submissions, conduct an online community poll ranking the various works, and facilitate the commission's discussions about the works. We then also suggest suitable locations for the selected works based on the original plan where there were specific designations by the designer of the park for where sculptures are optimally located, and then we consult with staff as to the feasibility of installing in those specific locations. We do coordinate the installation and removal of the art, and we handle all communications with the artists. Phase Four, we'll begin our discussion of the works that were selected by the Arts Commission. Would involve 10 works, and each would be on display for two years. They'll be installed in June and would be removed June 2021. Artists receive an honorarium from $2,500 to $6,000. And your Arts Commission has selected 10 works and three alternates, the first of which here is Pinnacle by Stephanie Bakiero. And this lovely and graceful work is an exceptional abstract gem. The artist is from Laguna Beach, and she just happens to be here with us this evening. Stephanie, would you stand up for a moment? And Stephanie is represented by one of the most highly esteemed contemporary art galleries in Orange County, the Peter Blake Gallery. And Peter Blake happens to be with us this evening as well. And not only is he an esteemed gallery owner and curator, but he is a member of the City Council of Laguna Beach, so we welcome them. Details of the works, their dimensions, their weight, their ranking in the public polling, the jury ranking are up there, the materials that are used. So we could move on to the next work. This is called The Tot. A whimsical tot, wearing goggles, contemplates the possibility of jumping into the water in this steel sculpture crafted with a stylish steampunk twist. It's by well-known San Diego sculptor, Richard Becker, who has works in museums and corporate collections. And interestingly, he was commissioned not only to create a POW memorial in the U.S. National Cemetery, but also a Homer Simpson sculpture for Fox Studios. Spy Boy is next, by David Buckingham. This is another fun work and one that kids will love, a life-size colorful figure made entirely of found pieces of metal. The artist is a well-known LA-based artist, and he's exhibited in area museums as well as in New York and London. Next. Windswept. This grouping of three angelic figures of slightly different sizes and crafted in polished stainless steel offers a mysterious welcome to passersby. The artist is based in Las Vegas, where he has several commissions. Feathers in the Wind. This kinetic sculpture suggests a sudden whirlwind of feathers flying in the air, and the artist says his intent is to pay homage to Native American culture. The artist, Alex Gale, is a very well-known San Diego artist. Slices of Heaven is a delightful work for all ages that was ranked number one by both the judges and by the public. And it's a Key West, Florida-based artist who's very popular with outdoor exhibitions all around the country, and he is also the artist of popsicles, which remain on view in Phase Three. Hurricane by Ray Katz. This monumental, the monumental open beam architecture of City Hall is reflected in this impressive work, displaying to full effect the heavy-duty structural elements that comprise it. This Michigan-based artist is in major city collections all around the Midwest. His odyssey was in our very first phase here. This tongue-in-cheek stainless steel sculpture, Chairman of the Board by Craig Reiman, suggests that a surfer has gone airborne on the gnarliest of waves with a board that seems to have a propeller. His work is exhibited widely throughout Southern California, and his work Flight remains on view in Phase Three. Contender. This imposing 13-foot Corten steel figure by John Meridgen appears to be taking a power walk through Civic Center Park with a joyful nod to the sky. It's a Kansas-based artist, and his works are on permanent display throughout several Midwestern states. And the final of the top 10, Start Now by Scott Froshower. Start Now is a lighthearted and inspired work of conceptual art that urges the viewer to take the path forward through the park and wherever else they're headed in life. Highly regarded LA-based artist whose works have been exhibited at the Smithsonian in Washington and at the Burning Man Festival. We have three alternates in case something happens with the others. Exposed by Kathy Tasletz, an LA-based artist who created this lovely representation of a larger-than-life sized leaf. Fallen Sky by upstate New York artist Coral Lambert. And this work is like the surprise discovery of remnants from an ancient satellite or maybe an alien spaceship. The artist is based in upstate New York and is in many collections. And finally, Hope Springs Eternal by Grant Bathke, Vista-based artist. Stained glass butterflies sit atop a stanchion. This was actually, the ranking was not included on this slide, but it is ranked fourth in the online poll and 20th by the commissioners. So the sculptures in Civic Center Park are your community's exhibit. They're not ours at Arts Orange County. We are here to facilitate, and they're very popular. I was here just the other day, and hundreds of people were wandering through the park. Almost everyone stops to look at the works. So something for everyone is included in this, as has been in each of the past phases, and that is a testament to the work of your Arts Commission and judges and the public who participated in the polling. So thank you very much. That's my presentation.
All right, well, thank you, sir. Staff, did you have anything more to add?
No, ma'am.
All right. Any comments up here? Seeing none? Why don't we open it to the public? Any comments on these art installation items? Yes, Mr. Mosher.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Since we're always interested in transparency, I just wanted to make sure that you, as the people choosing what the next things to be exhibited here, were aware that there was a work that was in the top 10, which was the sculpture, I sent you an email, there's a copy of this outside, a realistic sculpture of a deer. It was rated very highly by the public. It was actually rated number two by the judges. It was considered both popular and high artistic merit. It was originally in the Arts Commission's top 10 that they were going to be recommending to you. It was removed at the last minute, not for artistic reasons, but out of concern that you, as the council, would be concerned that there was a liability because of people being injured by the antlers of the deer. I personally am not sure that that's a very big concern, because the people from Arts OC proposed a location on the slope out here by the parking lot where it would not be easily accessible. And since that's not an artistic decision, but the Arts Commission was trying to anticipate what your attitude would be towards this, I think you at least should know that this was a contender, and it was actually in the top 10, and it was going to be presented to you. Until at the last minute, there was a concern that there was going to be a liability issue. So that is my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Ron Yo again, and I just wanted to say that this is a great project. It's just a wonderful park. I enjoy it. We bring over all of our visitors through it, and it's just a joy forever. I've visited many sculpture gardens with, throughout the country as well as Europe, and this is really a special thing. So congratulations to you and the commissions and all the artists. Something we all need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Does the Arts Commission want to say anything?
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, Mayor Protam O'Neill, Councilman Avery, Councilman Duffield, Councilman Muldoon, Councilman Hurdman, and Councilwoman Joy Brenner. Tonight, the City Arts Commission is asking the City Council to vote on 10 works of art that compromise the Phase Four of the exhibition in the Civic Center Park. The 10 artworks chosen consider the popular vote of the community with a scored review by members of the Arts Commission and a select jury panel. The artworks selected represent diversity in medium and style, and range from more traditional works to those with the more contemporary bent. The artists represented, with six being from California, span both age and geography, some surprising us with bursts of color, and some intriguing us with subtle and not-so-subtle uses of material. All, I believe, contribute to our magnificent museum without walls and continue to reinforce Newport Beach's reputation as a leader in the establishment and presentation of public art. The project could not have happened without the long-term vision and support of The project could not have happened without the long-term vision and support of our city council and wonderful city staff. Thank you. Each member of the Arts Commission worked very hard this time to determine that the artworks selected were both appropriate and representational of our city's culture and community. OC Arts has been incredible in its operational support, providing us with guidance and insight throughout the process. According to the plan approved by city council in January, with your approval tonight, preparation and installation can begin most immediately, and we can look forward to the grand opening of Phase Four of the Newport Beach Sculpture Exhibition on June 22nd. Our residents and the public will have 730 days to visit the Phase Four exhibition in the Civic Center Park and visit it with Phase Four installed at the same time in three or four months to enjoy both 21 works of sculpture in the Civic Center Park. Again, and on behalf of the City Arts Commissioners and Commissioner Marie Little, who is here this evening, and Commissioner Wyon Kaufman, thank you for your support and your generosity. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have as well.
I have one question. Thank you, Chair, career for your excellent leadership of our Arts Commission and steering this project. And you primarily, you've been chair for the last three or the four installations, I think, at least.
Two.
Two, all right. So, thank you for your continued leadership on this. First of all, I want to commend and thanks to the county arts council for the leadership and counsel that they give. I would like to see, as we go forward, I'm pleased to see, let me put it this way, I'm pleased to see that we have more California artists and even Southern California artists. I personally like to see more or more of an exclusive focus to that, but that'd be up to the commission to consider. One question I had, why do some artists require an honorarium and some do not?
It just depends on what the expenses are that are associated with getting the work to and from the city civic center.
Oh, okay. Is that because some were zero?
Yes.
Well, anyway, I have, I, obviously, we've all seen how this, as I used the word a moment ago, institutionalized. We have an institutionalized sculpture garden, and I know you cobble together the funds that the public provides, so that is a great community resource that we're applying to bring art and culture to our community. So, thank you for, and the Arts Commission and members here tonight for your good work. I appreciate it. And thank you for the artists. I don't think we've ever had the artists whose work is going to be installed in the art gallery. I've heard of you as a fellow councilperson, so word of you travels north. So, welcome to Newport Beach. We appreciate your contribution to our art in our community that's led by the people. So, thank you. Ms. Brenner.
I would like to say thank you, because we've seen such an evolution in this process over the four phases, and especially thank you for engaging the public, because that was always my concern, and you've done such a good job of getting people excited about it and really voting for these sculptures. So, that's been exciting to me. And as we finish the fourth phase of what was an approved project here, I am going to suggest that we, at some point, have a public hearing on public art in Newport Beach. And really, I know you guys are great about having your meetings, and you get some people that show up. I'd like to see us have a public discussion about art in our community, what we like, what we don't like, where we like it, what, you know, what sorts of things we want to talk about. For instance, I'd love for us to find a place that we could put Mule Deer, because that was spectacular, and Delilah as well. So, you know, so let's talk at some point, as a council and as a community, about how we can make art really accessible to everyone in our community and make sure that everybody's participating. I, we get people participating that really know about art and care about art, but the more we can get other people engaged in this whole process, the better. So, at some point, I'll be suggesting that we bring this to council and hold a public hearing on this topic.
Very good. Mr. Herdman.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Brenner, I'd ask that that discussion also include maintenance of art that exists throughout the city that is kind of falling apart in some places. We have some maintenance to do on some of the art that's been installed. I just thought the council might be interested that Arlene and I are working with our new Assemblywoman, Cody Petry-Norris, on securing what we're hoping will be maybe five years of funding, future funding, which takes us 10 years into the future for the sculpture garden. So, I've written a letter on behalf of the Arts Commission and submitted it, and the ball is now in Cody's court as far as carrying it through for funding.
Mr. O'Neill.
Mayor Protem.
All right. In memory of Barry, I move staff approval.
Oh.
I miss him. This is, I gotta be honest, we miss him at CDMRA meetings, we really do, but this is that moment right now where you just, I mean, I miss Barry Allen right now. So, anyway, I move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item number 15, assessment districts number 116 and 116B and Underground Utilities District 22, Phase One. Mr. Senecore, I bet, is coming up here.
And on this item, I have a, I have a conflict due to my employment telecommunications, and the same conflict exists on the following item as well.
All right. Well, go watch a movie. Miss, staff, please. Mr. Webb and Mr. Senecore.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, council. This is a good project tonight, a culmination of a lot of work that starts back in 2013 with the formation of a Rule 28 district on Balboa from council and two adjacent private Rule 20B districts, 116 and 116A. We're happy and pleased to bring you a word of construction contract tonight, finally, after all these years, and we do have a staff report to go into detail if you'd like.
Do we need, does anyone up here need a staff report?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure, please.
Funding requirements. The funding requirements go in, and first off, I'll just say kudos to the negotiations with utility companies. We've been talking about this for years, and seeing a little over $2.1 million coming in from utility companies on this item is spectacular. So, congratulations. And then, yeah. I'll just note, I mean, it is not common for the city to use general fund money on an undergrounding district. So, I'd like you to just talk a little bit about the $250,000 line item for the city general fund. Given all of the history of this, it's still worth making sure that we're talking about the fact that this is a little bit out of the ordinary. So, I, if you wouldn't mind just talking a little bit about that, I'd appreciate it.
Well, if I may, kudos to Mike Senecore, our acting city engineer. He really grabbed the utilities by the shoulder and got their attention and got the deal. So, I'm gonna let him talk about the small contribution the city will be making in comparison. Could you elaborate on that, Mike?
Yes, Dave. Mayor, members of council, thank you for bringing this forward. We're excited about it. It has been a lot of hard work, and we do have some of the residents, proponents in the audience who are paying for a majority of the, or actually, all the adjacent work. The 28 work on Balboa Boulevard, though, that's being paid by the utility companies, but getting that $2.1 million out of them, we couldn't quite get everything out of them. So, our oversight of the work itself, we've got on the contract tonight for MV5 to oversee the work that's being done instead of Edison doing it, we're doing it, and that's $125,000 of that 250. There's also geotechnical work that we'll be doing, as well as survey work, that it was hard to pin that entirely on the utility companies. I'm still hopeful we might be able to, but we haven't quite finished dotting the i's and crossing the t's on all their contracts. AT&amp;T, we have. Just this afternoon, Spectrum came through and said, "We're good with the numbers, a little few changes." And then, the final step will be that contract with Edison that will, of course, work out with the attorney's office in Greys.
All right. So, Mike, the 250,000 is allocated in toward the 28 work, and so, we're essentially making up the shortfall on what would be our responsibility, anyway.
Consider that our management of the 28 work, that we would otherwise pay with 28 funds by Edison doing it.
On the Balboa Boulevard, it's not the, yeah, it's not the residential.
Okay. I understand that now. Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Mike, or what, without getting really into, I assume there's probably some benefits. There's, what gets torn up to put this in? The roadway, the sidewalks?
I did, I did have a slide that shows the actual impacts of all this. This is in the roadways, this is in the sidewalks, it's in the alleys. It's, it's from River Avenue all the way down to 36th Street.
Yep.
And originally, we envisioned only three companies involved in this. We now have six. Two arms of Verizon have joined the party, which share the cost. In addition, we're also adding a city fiber optics line between River and 32nd Street.
Right. That's what I was thinking, these sort of spillover effects that are benefits as well in this project.
The other major benefit that the property owners, the adjacent districts, have done is they've actually shrunk our 28 responsibilities back to just Balboa Boulevard, and they're picking up entirely outside the main Balboa Boulevard. So, this is a big collaborative, joint effort between lots of parties.
Yeah, and it's staggering how much money it is, but then, we've just done such a good job getting the grant and then get the residents pitching in, and, you know, we're doing our part, and, but the impact, I mean, what you see on the peninsula, I'm just such a fan of it. It is just, it's more than beautification, there's something more there for everybody. And that's not just the people, but everybody driving that stretch of road. It's really good, and it just makes the town sparkle when you get that all cleaned up. And that's an entryway into one of our prime villages. So, Mr. Dixon gets more.
Well, thank you, thank you. It will add more beauty to our city.
It's really great. So, congratulations. I know it took, I mean, getting it all set up and the agencies and the residents and all the effort, great job, really, really good. Thank you.
Well, I'll echo that, because as you say, it started in 2013, and a number of residents, Marie Little, sitting out there, she and her husband have been working on this since, before I was even elected, you've been working on it. And you organized all the neighbors and all the residents, and Mike, you've been shepherding it. Could you just say publicly what we're saving by doing the construction ourselves?
Well, if council recalls, back in June last year, we had a review of the Balboa Boulevard project itself, and we had originally estimated that 2013 to be about $4 million, and Edison was saying the overall project was going to be $9 million just last June. Trimming this down, we wouldn't have been able to do the adjacent 20Bs. We were 1.5 million over, I think, in 8111, and 750,000 over in Marie Little and Paul's districts, 116. We've brought those all back in the box by managing it ourselves. And this is the first time in Edison's history that they've allowed any other entity to do 28 work. We are on the bleeding edge of this, so.
That's great.
So, it's, it's quite an accomplishment for the city. And these districts actually don't just date back to 2013. 111 dates back to 2009.
Unbelievable. Ten years.
The actual Balboa Boulevard is 2011, when the city's advisory panel started all this with the landscaping. So, it's been a long time coming, and we're excited to be here tonight and start it off for the construction.
Well, thank you for your tenacity to moving this forward. Any other comments up here? No? Any public comments? Seeing none? Do we have a motion?
I'll move staff report.
You have a second? I'll second. All right, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. We are on item number 16, the acquisition of Rule 28 credits from the city of Linwood. So, I know staff needs to explain this. Mr. Webb, Mr. Senecore.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually a combination of your last vote. This is the second phase of our Rule 28, and what this has to do with is regard to, we are short on 28 funds, and we're looking to purchase it. We have purchased 28 funds about six times before from other cities, and to Mr. Senecore's credit, him and his consultants went out and shake the bushes and found some credits for us. So, the deal laid before you today is if you'd like to purchase those credits, which will allow us to complete Phase Two of the 28 project all the way down to the Newport Pier area, and we have a staff report on that, if you'd like.
Council members, would you like a staff report, or do you have questions? Probably have some questions. Want to ask a question?
No, I don't want to ask a question. I love this. Being able to purchase, being able to, I mean, this is money that we'd need to spend in order to complete a 28, and we're getting at a fraction of the cost because other people aren't using their 28 money. I love it. It's great.
I'll find some more.
Yeah. And we have a budget surplus that pays for this. So, thank you, Mike and staff, for beating the bushes. Any public comments on this?
Hello, council. My name is James Peterson. I'm the Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison, and I just want to compliment the city staff on the work that they've done with our planners and designers to help with the project that you just discussed. And we're going to have additional projects that we're going to need to work on, but it's been a good working relationships. We've made a lot of improvements since that meeting last June, and we'll look forward to continuing to work with them.
Well, thank you for coming back. I know we weren't really, it was kind of a brutal meeting last June.
We heard you loud and clear, and hopefully, you think we got the job done.
You did. Job well done. So, thank you, and tell your colleagues this, and we appreciate the partnership we're doing, we're accomplishing together and getting this done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion. Oh, excuse me, one more.
Good evening. Dick Armstrong. I live in the District 111, and I'll make this short, because it looks like you're ready to vote on this, but I just wanted to be here to solicit your support for this. One of my neighbors, Grant Deets, has worked very, very hard with Mike and solicited some of us to go out and knock on doors and walk the streets, and there's a lot of enthusiasm in the district for this project, long-needed, and so, we look forward to your support for this.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. All right. Do we have a motion?
I move staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Let's vote.
And if I could follow your voting, just as a comment, I was gonna say that Mike's done such a great job that he's gonna be invited to the PUC meeting in San Francisco next week to be on a panel.
Really?
To talk about reforming the 28 programs. I've encouraged him to go, and I know he's gonna be on the panel and give some great suggestions.
That's fantastic.
And how others might proceed on their 28s, and maybe Edison changed some of their procedures to help these districts move forward. So, good job, Mike.
Very good. Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Item 17, appointment of a new city arts commissioner to fill an unscheduled vacancy. We all should have ballots on our desks here. Let me find mine. So, staff report? Who's gonna want to give that staff report? Do we need a staff report to just tell us how to vote?
Yeah, there must be at least, the candidates have to have at least four votes.
Public comment.
Oh, public comments, please.
Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
My name is Jim Mosher. I actually have a comment on this. There's quite a contrast between the two applications you have, and I'm not advocating for one or the other. One person explains why they want to be on the Arts Commission in two very short sentences. The other submitted a 26-page essay on why they want it to be. What I wanted to say is the Arts Commissioners have a number of duties imposed on them by the city charter. One of those, which the Arts Commission does in spades, is to encourage programs for the cultural enrichment of the community. But some of the other duties they have are not so well-known, and one of those is to recommend ordinances and regulations to you for the preservation of the historical, aesthetic, and cultural aspects of our community. It's kind of like Ron Yo was saying earlier, there's supposed to be watchdogs to keep Newport Newport. And although they do the encouraging of cultural activities, I don't think they are very much focused on preserving our historical and aesthetic aspects, what our, what our community looks like. And the one applicant who gave you the very brief explanation actually apparently looked at the city website and read this and believed it, and thought... And the, the one applicant who gave you the very brief explanation actually apparently looked at the city website and read this and believed it, and thought on the commission she would be preserving the history of Newport Beach.
All right.
Which I think is something the commission should be doing, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Brad, did you, Mr. Avery, do you want to make a comment? Your name is-
Oh, no, sorry.
All right, all right, shall we, do we all submit our ballots?
Councilmember Duffield voted for Rich LaGrande. Councilmember Avery voted for Rich LaGrande. Councilmember Muldoon voted for Rich LaGrande. Councilmember Brenner voted for Rich LaGrande. Councilmember Hurdman voted for Rich LaGrande. Mayor Dixon voted for Rich LaGrande. And Mayor Protem O'Neill voted for Maureen Flanagan. With seven votes, Rich LaGrande is the Arts Commission appointee.
I don't know if he's here, is he here? No? All right, very good, congratulations, Mr. LaGrande. Number 18, amended and restated employment agreements for the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. Who would like to present that?
So, the city attorney and city manager will be recusing themselves from this item, given the potential impact on our finances.
Barbara Salvini will be leading the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and council members. My name is Barbara Salvini, I'm the Human Resources Director, and I have with me this evening Edward Zapia, who assisted me with the drafting of the contract agreements that are before you tonight. Under state law, we need to provide a summary of the salient terms of the agreements, and if you give me just a minute, I will get my notes. Tonight, you're considering a first amended and restated agreement for the city manager, and fifth amended and restated agreements for the city attorney and the city clerk respectively. All agreements call for a 2% adjustment to base salary that will be effective April 13, 2019, along with a $2,700 one-time bonus, and the requirement that these appointees cover all costs, including all increases associated with their participation in a supplemental retirement pension plan, which goes by the short name LAYUNA, and stands for Laborers International Union of North America. Additionally, if the agreements are approved, their salaries will be adjusted in January of 2020 by the lesser of a 2% base adjustment of a cost of living adjustment, I'm sorry, by the lesser of a 2% adjustment or a cost of living adjustment which is based on an increase in the cost of living as defined by statute. As outlined in all three of the proposed agreements, the appointees' benefits are tied to those outlined in the city's key and management compensation plan, unless they are specifically addressed in their individual employment agreements. I do want to mention that the key and management compensation plan that was approved earlier tonight calls for a modification to the cafeteria allowance, and that does provide some savings to the city. All three appointees' agreements are tied to this modified cafeteria allowance benefit as well. And finally, the agreements also call for one-time merit payments for each appointee, specifically $20.38 per paid workday for the city manager, $18.29 per paid workday for the city attorney, and $11.29 per paid workday for the city clerk. And that completes my summary of the agreements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Avery.
Councilmember O'Neill brought this up, but I'd just like to go one more time, because this, the $2,700 payment, and it goes by quickly, but people don't know what LAYUNA is, and so just because of the insinuation that it was a gift, if we could just go over it for just a minute-
Of course.
-exactly what we're doing here.
Right, so, the employees that are under the key management compensation plan, as well as employees that are participants in organized associations that the city has with the City Employees Association, and the Professional and Technical Employees Association, all of these employees belong to a supplemental retirement plan. LAYUNA is the acronym. Those rates have increased over the years, and the employees are picking up those increased rates, and in order to offset that, there has been the 2% adjustment to the salaries, as well as a savings associated with the cafeteria allowance modification that has provided an opportunity for the council, if it wishes, to provide the $2,700 bonus.
And as, as a way to kind of compensate for this, them picking it up, we were paying it before, is that correct?
That's, you were paying a portion of it before the city was.
Right. And so ultimately, this sort of nets out for us?
Well, as a result of the earlier agreements and the modifications that you approved tonight to the key and management compensation plan, from here on out, the employees pick up the entire cost associated with the LAYUNA pension plan.
Right, great, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I want to just expand on that a little bit, if you, if you don't mind, Brad. Before the 350 plan got adopted, there were supplemental plans like this, and so there was a, the supplemental plan called LAYUNA, and the original intent, very clear original intent, was that the city would actually pay nothing toward LAYUNA. The problem was that when the recession hit in 2008, 2009, the, this was an employer-sponsored plan, and an employer-sponsored plan ultimately means that the employer has the backstop on all of this if something goes wrong, and unfortunately, as we all know, things went very wrong in our economy. And so when that happened, the, the cities that were the employer sponsors of these plans were given a, what was it called, a red status notification?
I believe it was critical status.
Critical status, and told that the city, as the, as the sponsor, needed to start picking up the, the payments. That was not the original intent, but that's been, that's what's been happening for years now. And as part of our negotiations with our miscellaneous employees that have, were just referenced, two of the bargaining groups at least who had those, the, the agreement was, and this, this has been approved, and you can go back to a few meetings, you can see this, it was approved as a, the employees would pick this up, and as an offset for the original, for the initial shock of that, that's where the $2,700 one-time bonus comes in. And so, while we're looking at, when that happened, it then caused what we just approved tonight, which is the key and management picking this up, and then it, and then key and management is tied to our, let's see, actually, we're going to be talking about this in just a moment, but police, police chief and fire chief, and also it plays, it factors into the agreements for our city attorney, city clerk, and city manager. And for our city clerk and city attorney, these were, it was time for us to handle the review and also review the contracts. For our city manager, it was not, but the, this, the, when she was negotiating her contract in this last year, it was not anticipated at the time that she would also be picking up the LAYUNA, and I'm sure that had she done so, there would have been a negotiation toward that as well. So, it's only fair that if we're going to be imposing that on her now, we also address the, address it the same way we're addressing everyone else that she manages as the city manager. So, that's, in a nutshell, and I will tell you, wrapping the arms, wrapping our arms around LAYUNA was very complicated, and so my high-level overview could be supplemented by an hour of conversation that no one wants at this time.
But I will add, follow up with a question, though, and, and Ms. Salvini can answer this. The city's portion of that LAYUNA employee, employee pension payment was getting into some pretty high numbers. What would, refresh my memory, that we would be on the books for paying the annual payment?
I believe before the beginning of the year, the portion that the city was paying was an additional 1.16.
Million?
Percent? I, I don't know the, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but the, and the employees were contributing 1.5%.
Well, anyway, it was significant money, and so this was something that we appreciated, working with the key and management to take this on, and so the 2,700 was a one-time payment to help absorb the shock of taking that on, and, and for future, in perpetuity, that they will be taking it on. The city is no longer financing or co-financing that pension plan, retirement plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, seeing, do we have any public, do we have public comments on this? Not yet, okay, I'm sure we'll have a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon, and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I appreciate the attempt at explaining the $2,700. I don't totally follow it. And I, I understand your concern that I characterize it as a gift. My, my reason for doing that is the way it's expressed here in the staff report, without explanation. It is given for being here on this day. It's not tied to having worked in the past, it's not tied to any promise of working in the future, or offsetting anything, because you get it just instantaneously for being here. So, for the other employees, and even for these, it seems rather arbitrary. I would suggest, and it appears, and I did not hear anything to dissuade me from that, that although the employees are going to be picking up this cost in the future, giving a bonus every time we redo these things, it, it happened three years ago, it's happening this year, it's not going to happen again? Or is, is giving this bonus going to be a continuing offset of something? Because it is, it was there, it's gone up this, it's more this time than it was before? So, okay? I would not have guessed that from that, and, and then the other consideration here, which is a smaller one, but it's about this merit pay. All three of these employees, unlike the ones in our bargaining groups, were operating under contracts where we thought, public thought that they were working at a fixed compensation that was set in the contract, and now we're hearing that they're getting a merit pay, which goes back and is paying them for service already rendered from January 1 until now. That, as I understand it, is supposed to be something that our California Constitution is supposed to protect us from happening. We're not supposed to pay employees more than they agreed to pay, to work for, and so I think we deserve some explanation of why retroactive pay is not a problem when an employee is working under a fixed contract, as these were. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem O'Neill had, had explained this, do you want to do it again, just so, for the public record to know that?
Well, we, we have a lawyer here. I can do it, but I'd rather have outside counsel do it.
Thank you, council members, for having me. I'll explain it certainly in my legal analysis, I understand the analysis that you gave was separate and independent, but in short, a city has broad discretion to set forth its compensation packages to employees and for services performed. So, certainly, and the reason we deem that these are not gifts, besides not being categorized that way, is because we're in contract negotiations, so to retain employees, to recruit these employees, and to compensate them for the services they've performed, a city has broad discretion to do that, and this are compensation contracts, and including going forward for two years, the, the promises in these contracts include, among other things, continued terms. So, it's, it's as simple as it's employee compensation for employees, it's not giving a gift to a non-employee.
Okay, two quick things, the first one is, I just checked, the, the number on the LAYUNA contribution was about $366,000, so, not insignificant. And then the other is, the $2,700, just so everyone understands, is also non-perceivable, so that's part of the equation, when we're factoring our, the costs, which, by the way, if you would very much like to look at the costs, they're at the end of the staff report, so, anyway, thank you. It's one time.
Okay, any other, any questions up here? Okay?
Yeah, just for those, I think this is important enough that residents understand, the item that's crippling cities up and down the state of California is the unfunded pension liability. It's, it's devastating to many communities, and this is a way for us to reward our employees for hard work, without having to put ourselves in a dangerous position that other cities often do, which is having too many liabilities related to pensions. So, that I think has good financial merit, Mr. Mosher, and I think it also is appropriate for us to be competitive in the market and reward our employees without saddling the city with any unnecessary debt. Thank you.
Thank you, let, do we have a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation.
A second? Somebody second? I'll second, okay. Oh, Brad did, okay, good, all right, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, item number 19, the amended and restated employment agreements for the fire chief and police chief, and as Mayor Protem O'Neill said a moment ago, these are all linked together because those contracts require this peril construction. Ms. Salvini, do you want to explain better than I just did?
Well, I believe the city manager is actually going to present on these, because these are agreements that the council has delegated to her to allow her to enter into, so I'll let her go ahead, but I'm here as a resource, if you have questions.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, well, I'll keep it short, because you're right, it is a continuation, for the same reasons that we're looking at the other contracts, to bring in alignment with the key and management changes, bringing forth the proposed amendments for the police and fire chiefs as well here. So, similar to what was approved earlier for key and management, we have Fire Chief Duncan's proposed agreement here, it's the first amended and restated employment agreement with a 2% adjustment to base salary, effective April 13, 2019, a 2,700 one-time bonus, and the requirement that he covers all costs, including all increases associated with his participation in LAYUNA. And the, the, this agreement also calls for a one-time merit payment of $18.03 per paid workday from the beginning of the pay period, that includes January 1, 2019, and including April 12, 2019. Regarding Chief Lewis's proposed, this would be the second amended and restated employment agreement, and on Chief Lewis's contract, his salary adjustments are tied to the Police Management Association in order to avoid compaction issues. So, this proposed agreement reflects the base salary adjustments he has received as of March 30, 2019, as a result of a PMA increase of 2%. Similar to Chief Duncan's agreement, the proposed amendment also calls for the $2,700 one-time bonus, and the requirement that he cover all costs now, and including any future increases in LAYUNA. The proposed agreement also calls for the one-time merit payment of $17.98 per paid workday from the pay period, that includes January 1, 2019, and including March 29, 2019. And as noted on the prior, as with the prior agreement, that the key and management compensation plan includes a modification of the cafeteria allowance, which does provide savings to the city into the future, and that is tied in with these agreements as well, and that concludes my report.
Very good, thank you so much. Any comments up here? Seeing none, comments in the, from the public?
Mayor Dixon, and members of the council, my name one last time is Jim Mosher, and since we're trying to achieve clarity tonight about the $2,700, when this was done three years ago, $2,400, that, that bonus, or one-time, I shouldn't say bonus, the one-time payment was given only to non-safety, the miscellaneous employees. So, the fire chief and police chief, even if they were to have parity with the employees working under them, would not have been eligible for it at that time, is it the understanding this year that we're giving the $2,700 to every city employee? Not, not just management, not just the miscellaneous regular employees, but all of our safety employees as well, including the police chief and the fire chief. I, it's not obvious to me if we changed our policy on that, or why we're doing that. Thank you.
Ms. Leong, do you want to comment on that, or Barbara?
I'll take over on this one, thank you. As we discussed earlier, the reason for the $2,700 one-time is in relationship to the LAYUNA, it has no, no relationship or bearing to the $2,400 that was given in prior contracts. And I don't believe in those prior contracts, any of the appointees received one-time bonus, so it's apples and oranges.
Okay, all right. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it up here, do we have a motion?
I'll move city manager recommendation.
Do you have a second? All right. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, Madam Clerk.
A motion to consider the vote on any- A motion to consider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made by, only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motion for reconsideration? Seeing none. We are adjourned. Thank you.